All right, well, let's get started. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Town of Southbridge Joint Education Human Services Subcommittee Town Council Meeting. We're in the Veterans Conference Room. It's Wednesday, April 12th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And just so everybody knows, this meeting is being recorded, audio and video. We'll send an attendance sheet around for everybody to sign. And... Roll call. Ariel Ortiz.
Present.
Gil Provost.
Present.
Counsel Ryan.
Present.
Counsel Marquetti.
Present.
Counsel Montigny, present. Faieth, present. All right, we'll get right into Agenda Item Number Three. Review Fiscal Year 2024 Southbridge Public Schools Budget in the Amount of $34,017,450.00 and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented.
Some votes.
Second. Motion by Ortiz, second by Provost. Okay, so I guess we'll defer to a team of Dr. Vilar and Mr. Racine.
Does anyone, if you need a copy of the budget book itself, we do have them.
Are you asking?
You did, okay. Hand it out. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I guess I'll frame our conversation. I'm hoping to move quicker through our slides this evening. I know a lot of you saw the school committee presentation. A lot of this is redundant information from that. So what I did in putting together the handouts that you all have, PowerPoint that's printed out, is I did add some information in the back under the appendix, which I thought may or may not be responsive to potential questions that could come up. So it's just kind of information I wanted to share, make sure you had. The budget book document that we have, you know, thanks to Counsel Ryan. Years past, we worked to develop a format that was responsive to a lot of questions, providing more information. So we have that. So with that said, I'm just going to jump into a quick review. So as I presented to the school committee, we have made some measurable gains in a lot of different areas over the last five years, despite three of them being years that we're dealing with the pandemic. Our enrollment is actually up a little bit this year. So that always has an impact when it comes to fiscal numbers. Small, very small increase. But it is the second time in 10 years that we've actually seen an increase in enrollment. Yeah, and you know, at the end of the day, I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the accomplishments. So the district has a stabilized leadership team, which is really important because that's been one of the primary challenges that we faced as a district. We have implemented language arts and mathematics curriculum. And relevance, all of this, of course, is supported by this budget. The curriculum that's in place, K through 12 in the district, is aligned with the requirements of the state standards, which means it's sufficiently rigorous for the grade level. We have implemented across all of our schools positive behaviors and interventions and supports. It's a framework around social, emotional, and behavioral management for students. We actually won an award during the pandemic for how we pivoted that to support children both remotely and in place. And we've seen measurable improvements in climate across our schools. It's not perfect. There's plenty of room for growth, but there's also been a lot of growth. And I think that's an important piece for us to see. Systemically, across the district, and this budget will continue to support implementation of software, things like Aspen and Munis, which have modernized our student information system, our financial system, which going back five years ago was very far from modern. We've also now begun to integrate data sources and have a series of website-driven, or actually database-driven, dashboards that allow us to start to make much more decisions based on actual data and information, which drives learning to higher levels. Very important to us. Moving, I'm jumping quickly here, but to page four. You all know in the fall, Commissioner and I extended the turnaround plan for the next three years. Commissioner sets the goals, and they're rigorous. He's looking for us to get 50% at meeting expectations on the MCAS, language arts, mathematics, and sciences, very rigorous, to be quite honest. 10-point increase in our student growth percentages on ELA and math. Again, it's a real rigorous goal. 50% of our English learners need to make progress towards English language proficiency. We need to reduce our chronic absenteeism rate, and we need to improve the graduation rate. I would add for everyone, and with a specific focus on students with disabilities. So that, as we look and build this budget, our programming is designed to push things in that direction so that we can begin to demonstrate that measurable growth that he's looking for. We also have to consider, moving to page five, the Student Opportunity Act. So from the school's perspective, the Student Opportunity Act has been a very important source of additional funding for schools. But it's targeted funding that has to be used for things like enhanced core instruction, supporting student learning, targeting talent development of staff, or improving conditions overall for student success. We have to file a report every year with the State Department, demonstrating to them how we've utilized those funds in those areas. And it's reviewed by the department regularly. So that Student Opportunity Act is something we've parked with with DHS and with full council many times over the years because it is driving up not only state funding to the district, but the requirements around local contributions. Mr. Racine's going to spend the majority of our time tonight talking a lot about the finances there because I know that is the issue that's on everybody's mind for sure. Quickly on page six. This is again a whole bunch of curricular instructional materials and programming that we've put in place over the past five years. All of it is aligned with the expectations of the Student Opportunity Act. Most of it started before that act was passed. The alignment comes because it's all research-based, and these are the things that the department would have been looking for. And so when they set the requirements, much of what we were doing was aligned. So that's fortuitous in some ways. But it's all important things that are driving improvements across the district. Again, the math series, professional development for teachers, which is done every week. These things are important for teacher development, which ultimately will improve outcomes for our kids. And I know you've seen and heard about some of these programs more than once in presentations. We remain consistent. We haven't changed these programs over the past five years. We're implementing and trying to go deeper in them. On page seven, I wanted to highlight staffing that is impacted by this budget and just call to people's attention. We have 17 full-time equivalent positions in the budget that are aimed at improving student learning. So there are literacy coaches, five at ERS, five are scheduled to be at Charlton Street, five for West Street School, and two interventionists at our middle school. This is a part, and you see the graphic in the bottom. This is a part of our strategy, which is green. All students, it's tier one. Essentially, the idea is regular instruction for everyone. But then there are going to be kids who are going to need intervention. They fall into like the yellow or red category based on some criterion, metrics, and assessments. And so by having these interventionists, what we're saying is there are some kids who need extra assistance beyond what the classroom teacher is providing, and these positions are aimed at doing that. When we go to page eight, what we're looking at is our investment in social, emotional, learning, and mental health for our students. And we have 18 full-time equivalent positions supported by this budget. So at ERS, you have two adjustment counselors, and a counselor who's called City Connects. They're also providing, tracking services provided to our students. Charlton Street, we have two. West Street, we have three. Important to point out, West Street has a lot more students, and that's why there's more. The middle school has three of these positions, plus, again, City Connects and Guidance Counselor. At the middle school, high school, we have three adjustment counselors, a student services coordinator who has an adjustment and social work background, three guidance counselors, and a City Connects person, all supporting students' mental health, social, emotional well-being at school. We also have a curriculum called Second Step. That is a social, emotional, self-regulation curriculum to teach kids about feelings and how to interact with each other and better regulate their emotions in school. And that's taught across our elementary schools. We have this year contracted with a group called Cartwheel to provide remote counseling and psychiatric, even med management for students who have mental health needs in our schools. They provide up to 50 slots for students in their services. And so we're able to identify kids through our adjustment counselors who need additional assistance because mental health is becoming a significant barrier. And they are able to provide services that we haven't been able to get from the students in the community. The School Empowerment Network is another group that we work with that's helping train staff in restorative practices. In other words, what do you do after there's been a disciplinary event between an adult and two children, and how to come back together? So there's a significant investment in these issues, these barriers, that have been heightened by coming out of the pandemic. There's no doubt about it. We're not unique. Across the country, we're seeing tremendous needs in this area.
Excuse me, real sec. I see you, Counsel Steve. I just feel like it would probably be best if we save questions for the end.
Well, specifically related to this page.
Yeah, I know, but if we just start cutting up each page. It's kind of how we do on Town Council. We wait till the presentation's over. But I see you here. I'm going to start a list on the side. Thanks.
So just moving along, page nine. Again, looking at, we're trying to build capacity to support climate, culture, student learning. And so you can see across our schools, you have 21 FTEs, full-time equivalent positions in leadership that also support discipline. And some of these are going to be positions that overlap from the last two slides around guidance, social work, behavioral science. And to be clear, with behavioral science, we're talking about people like BCBAs, gosh, ABA techs. So these are folks that have behavioral backgrounds and understand how to better deal with students who are in crisis. And so we have those folks as a part of our response teams in our schools. So you can see there's quite a bit of staffing supporting that across schools. And this is just a way to break it down and see how those FTEs are spread out, again, in different areas, trying to show you the bigger picture. Trying to move as quick as possible here for you. On page 10, we have challenges. You know, we rank among the top 10 districts in the state, or actually, top three or four districts for high-need students. We're at 90, just 89.5 something percentage, basically 90% students high need. That has been a dramatic shift over time for us, going from the '70s to the '90s. So we definitely have seen this need increase. At the same time, we've also seen that as student needs have increased, the percentage of local contributions to the budget has decreased. And we have now dropped to essentially the bare minimum funding level, which is considered adequate level by the state. For this current fiscal year, we're at 100.4% of the bare state minimum requirement of funding. Slide 11 just shows you some data from the state as to where we land when it comes to high-need students and low-income students. And again, it reinforces we are among the highest percentage of high-need students of all districts in the state of Massachusetts. And that does, and is, and Mr. Racine will speak to this, is a factor that drives the Student Opportunity Act funding and Chapter 70 funding. So it is an important metric that is included to determine the amounts of funding associated with Chapter 70 in our district. If you look at slide 12, what I did is there's a massive list of 300 school districts in the Commonwealth, more than that. But what I've just tried to do out of context, and there is a complete list, so that if folks want to look for some specific district, this is publicly available information that you can get at the departments. But this is fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. We're in fiscal year '23 now, talking about fiscal year '24. But this shows where we are in our current funding level, at 100.4%. And gives you an idea of districts that are geographically close to us. Out of respect and deference for our interim town manager, I included Palmer, because I know that he spent some time there and had context. But just to give an idea of what other communities, where they are in their funding levels, and how we compare. So you have that information for your context. I know I ran fast. I know there's going to be questions. I figured there'd be questions, and I'd rather get to the questions. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Racine so he can talk about some of the drivers of this, and then we can answer questions. But I'm sure you got a lot.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Southracine. Thank you, Dr. Vilar. So I'm going to first start with enrollment. It was mentioned by Dr. Vilar earlier that we saw an increase in our enrollment only for the second time in 10 years. So on the top bar, we're on slide 13. You see in the blue bars is our total enrollment of the Southbridge Public Schools. In this past year, it was at 1,809 students, an increase of four students from the prior year. In terms of school choice, these are students who choose other public school districts than the one they reside in. The green bar shows the number of students who are choosing in to the Southbridge Public Schools. And the peach color is the number of students who choose out. And as you can see, the number of students choosing out has been as high as 274 students in the year 2017. That has now shrunk to 213, numbers we have not seen that low since 2013. And it is for the third year in a row that we have seen double-digit number of students choose into the Southbridge Public Schools. All of this is overall good news. So as we move to slide 14, we want to make sure that we set the context because this is informing why we are requesting the appropriation we are. We want to make sure that everyone understands the state funding formula. So in the 1990s, as part of the Education Reform Act that brought in a number of different changes, one of them was funding school systems. And the Massachusetts and the Commonwealth, they have followed this process ever since the 1990s, and it applies to all school districts. There's basically two parts to this. First, what is the bare minimum every community should spend on education? They sort of establish a floor, for a better way to put it. They determine this floor by two key parts. One is the number of students. They take that enrollment count as of October 1, and they look at grade level, level of need, and a couple other factors. Then they multiply it by these per pupil rates, a per-student amount that a group of educators and economists came up with back in the 1990s. And these differentiated amounts, they calculate these two numbers together to come to a total minimum amount the community should spend. They calculate this every year for every community. And this floor is known as the foundation budget. The next key part of this is how do you pay for that? And so this is when they look at the foundation budget, this floor amount. They figure out what is the mix of, that this should be paid by state dollars, state aid, and local tax dollars. And they look at a variety of levels to sort of determine the wealth of the community, both in terms of property values and income levels. So we have two visuals here on the bottom right of slide 14. You can see a wealthier community. The idea here is that the blue is a higher percentage of the foundation budget, meaning that more should come from local tax dollars. On the right of it, you can see a less wealthy community where the foundation budget should be higher because there's a higher level of need, and there will be more state aid to support that. So if we go to slide 15, what are these per pupil rates? We just have a reference here of what these rates are in terms of both a base foundation rate, which is what every student receives a certain amount, whether you're in kindergarten, or elementary, or high school. And then there's an additional amount for levels of need, special education, English learner, and low income. On slide 16, there had been debate for a number of years about, is this amount appropriate? And in 2019, the legislature and the governor passed what is now referred to, as mentioned earlier, the Student Opportunity Act. And part of this ushered in a number of reforms, but this is the biggest education reform act since the 1990s. And in essence, it said, we need to be spending more for students with greater needs. We need to close the achievement gaps of these students to their peers. We're going to phase in higher funding amounts, requirements, for these students over a six-year period, so it doesn't hit all at once. And then the responsibility in the district is to close these gaps. We want this money to be spent on evidence-based programs to close these gaps. And we're going to, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to ask every community, regardless of how much money they have, how they're doing to close these gaps. So what does this mean to these actual per pupil rates? We have four examples here to show you how they change. Now, before we get there, one thing I forgot to mention was that in the original funding formula that was passed in the 1990s, they said this would change every year based on inflation. They use a price deflator index, the third quarter that is released in December, and capped at 4.5%. And they said these rates will only change based on inflation. The Student Opportunity said, in addition to inflation, they need to go up even more. So I'm going to use the top-left example of the elementary base rate. This is the rate that every elementary student receives. In fiscal year 2020, that rate was $8,093. FY '21 is an example that didn't, the Student Opportunity Act didn't impact. There was a 2% increase in the inflation. The rate increased by 2%. In FY '22, you can see the inflation is the light bar of 1.4%. Above that, in the blue line, was the Student Opportunity Act of 2.9%. In FY '23, the inflation rate was 4.5% with a 1.3% increase for the Student Opportunity Act. And then FY '24, as part of the governor's budget, again, it goes up 4.5% and 1.4%. Now, for next year, that rate is $9,505. I'm going to use one other example here, even though there's three others, just for time. Here's the low-income rate. And this shows you again, the per pupil rates. When there are greater needs, these rates are increasing even more. So for the highest poverty rate for a district, originally, every student would receive an additional $4,589. But these rates grew. You can see the blue bar was 15.5% in FY '22, 13.4% in FY '23, and 12.5% in FY '24, above the inflation rates that were impacted. So within just a few years, this rate went from $4,589 to next year will be $7,576. And there'll be three more years of these increases in the future after FY '24. So what does this mean for Southbridge? On slide 17, this is a visual to show you what the foundation budget is for Southbridge. I want to clarify that the foundation budget is determining what is the amount that should be spent on all students attending public schools in Southbridge, which would include choice and charter schools. You can see the blue is the state aid, and the local contribution is the yellow. So here you can see for FY '24, the amount of the foundation budget is just over $38 million, of which 9 million would come from the local contribution by the community. And there would be almost $29 million in state aid to support that. Now I'm going to go to slide 18. Why is this really important for this conversation especially? And we've been, as you all may recall, we've been talking about this since the Student Opportunity Act was passed three years ago. We've brought this up in every presentation because this is now going to start to drive the appropriation for the Southbridge Public Schools. Before this year, the town of Southbridge gave more money spent above the foundation budget, which can also be referred to as net school spending, than was required. So you can see here these green bars, and I'll start with FY '18. In FY '18, the amount that Southbridge spent for education was $29.8 million. The required minimum, this floor you mentioned before, was only $28.5. And historically, they've always sort of spent above that. And that allows the community to determine, based on whatever they decide to, how much they want to spend above that floor amount. Except, as these rates and the required floor by the state kept increasing, that gap started to close. And you can see it closing between FY '21 and FY '22. Then it really decreased in FY '23. This is the fiscal year we're in right now. So this is the budget. So the state last year said the minimum floor is $34.7 million. And what was budgeted was $34.9 million. Now, again, when I use this, this isn't the budget for the Southbridge Public Schools. It's the budget for all public schools, students that are eligible for this spending. Next year, they say it's going to increase to $38 million. So that flexibility of spending above that foundation has closed very quickly. I'm going to go to slide nine now. We have tried to project forward what will the net education state aid be as a percentage of the Southbridge Public School appropriation? So you can see the FY '23 actual, which is this year, FY '24, which is the governor. The blue is the net education state aid after you subtract out charter school tuitions, school choice assessments. And then the local appropriation is the peach color above it. And that will, we are at least projecting, but there's a variety of factors that go into this, including the inflation rate, including these rates going up. But it could be that the increase in appropriation is increasing by the local appropriation above the state aid that we're already getting, between $567,000 and $608,000 annually over the next three years. On slide 20, I also want to clarify, I've been using the word foundation budget. The foundation budget does not equal this Southbridge Public School budget. Because when the state created this, they basically said, we're going to sort of define what a foundation budget is, which is basically what's, in essence, kind of like what's inside the school building. We're not going to determine how much you should be spending on buildings. We're not going to determine, we're not going to include in this transportation. But we're going to include sort of what's in that envelope of a school building. And we're also going to count charter school costs and school choice costs. So here on this page, you can see costs that are included, that get charged against this foundation budget, charter tuition assessments and reimbursements, school choice tuition assessments, state special education assessments, so these are students served in special education settings run by the state, and municipal-related costs in support of the schools. For example, the town of Southbridge, as you are sure know, health insurance costs are budgeted on the town side for all staff. So for the health insurance costs related to Southbridge Public Schools staff, those costs get to count towards the foundation budget. What's not included in this? The cost of transportation and the cost of major maintenance costs. So this would be projects in excess of $100,000. We're almost done here, so thank you for your patience. What does this mean for the projected appropriation? So to determine this calculation, you take the foundation budget, which is also known as net school spending. That's step one. Next year, it's $38 million. Let's make sure, account for other costs that are not in the Southbridge Public School budget. So we're going to take out charter tuition assessments that are set by the state, school choice tuition assessments, state special education assessments, municipal-related costs. And then we're going to add back charter tuition reimbursement. This is state aid to support charter tuition costs and transportation, resulting in a minimum floor. This is the minimum amount, based on this formula, that the Southbridge Public Schools should receive, is $34,017,145. Fortunately, to make up this increase, a large amount will come from the increase in state aid. As I mentioned, the state tries to provide more aid to support these increases. So while this increase of $3,400,000... So while this increase of three million four hundred seventy-nine thousand three fifty-two is very large, South, Southbridge itself will also receive two million six thirty-eight nine hundred ninety-six dollars to support this increase. So that is for the, the ongoing, um, operating appropriation. Briefly, I'll just touch also upon the capital requests, um, that we have submitted. They come in two major categories, basic safety requirements of two hundred eighty, eighty thousand, and emergency repairs of three hundred and fifty thousand. And I'm now move to slide twenty-four. The basic safety requirements are in two buckets. There were two recent, um, laws cast that had, um, additional requirements for emergency services to call the schools. Um, one law was called Carrie's Law, another one called Ray Bombs Act. Um, they had a number of requirements, and our schools are not in compliance for this. So we are requesting a hundred eighty thousand to upgrade our phone system so staff can call emergency services and emergency services can call them back to their classroom. The other, uh, piece we are asking for is that one of our maintenance trucks is more than fifty years, fifteen years old. Um, it has rot and, um, uh, is, is a key truck both, not only for our maintenance staff, but also for snowpiling our schools during emergencies. So we're requesting to replace this, and that is a hundred thousand dollars. The second priority is for emergency repairs. You have heard us come here and talk about the need for looking at our school buildings. Um, last year, we came and requested, um, funding for a facilities master plan, which we have now identified architectural firm and working out, uh, to try to kick off that project soon. This would be aimed at looking at our three elementary schools that are more than thirty years old, as well as the use of twenty-five coal ab. Um, why is this really important? Uh, well, uh, to support, uh, state-of-the-art school buildings, the state has this, uh, an agency called the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Part of everyone's sales tax that we spend on all goods goes to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This gives it money to be able to then pay for projects that they approve to help fund, um, major repairs and renovations and new buildings to communities. In order to receive it, though, unlike foundation budget, which is just an allocation every year of state aid, you need to apply for this. Um, they have a number of requirements with this, but you can receive substantial amounts of money for this. While we work to develop a master plan, um, in the coming years, uh, in the interim, there are a number of emergencies that crop up from leaking roofs to, uh, other, uh, window replacements, to things like that. And so we are asking for three hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, so that we can, uh, have a fund to help pay for emergency repairs, especially for the age of our buildings. With that, I will pause, and there's a number of new, uh, materials and appendix.
The appendix, again, this is information most of which we presented during the school committee, uh, public hearing. Uh, and that, uh, I did add a couple of slides to be responsive to the potential questions that folks may have. Certainly, I'm happy to answer questions about them, but I think, in general, I wanted to set time aside for the committee's questions, anticipating you may have a couple.
Okay, uh, I'll start at the table then. Um, Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Dr. Vlaar. First, thank you for coming here today. It was a welcome knowledge, as always. I, um, I'm gonna first go through, I have one question on the budget, but then I have some questions on, I wrote down as I was going through the slide. Actually, you answered that one in your appendix. So you, on the, on page four, you mentioned the turnaround goals, um, turnaround plan goals. Um, and you mentioned what the expectation is. Can you just enlighten us to what the current standing is?
Yeah, so, like...
So we can now see what we'd have to go through for years?
ELA proficiency, for example, like on our current MCAS, and this is across district, so you're kinda glomming all grades together, but ELA, we're at thirteen point two percent proficiency. Uh, our student growth percentage for, uh, ELA is forty-three point two. Uh, mathematics, it's ten point three percent proficient, with student growth score is at forty-four point five. I am gonna take a moment to point out that in eighth grade math, we have a student growth percentage that's over sixty-five percent. Um, so I'm anticipating, uh, some improved scores there. There's some significant movement going on at the middle school for sure. Uh, science is twelve point four percent at proficiency. There is no student growth score for science. Uh, chronic absenteeism fiscal year twenty-two, forty-one percent. We're down about nine percent year over year in chronic absenteeism. There's been improvement, but there's a ways to go.
I'm sorry, repeat that number one, what time on?
Uh, forty-one percent, chronic absenteeism. Um, and then our EL percentage is at, uh, twenty-three percent.
And then the four-year graduation rate for students with disabilities?
Yeah, I'm sure why it's not here. I'll have to get back to you on that. I, I know it's substantially lower than seventy-five percent, but for some reason, I don't have to.
Um, actually, that kind of leads in perfectly to my next question is, um, what's the district doing to help support, um, in addition to what they've been doing to help support students with special needs in the district?
Special education is a, uh, specific challenge because of staffing. We've had schools go the entire year without some special ed staff. Um, you know, we do have, uh, special education director, we have, uh, building assigned supervisors, we have educational assistants, um, you know, we have programming for students with autism and students with social-emotional, at different places, those are very specific programs. We do have interventionists that work with kids. But at the end of the day, the biggest challenge around special education right now is finding licensed teachers. Um, again, not unique to us, but we certainly are struggling with that. Um, that's partly why graduation rate isn't as high as it could be, uh, for sure. Uh, some of it's programming too, so this past, uh, year, for example, they've implemented a different reading intervention for students in special education, uh, using the Lexia platform. It's an online platform, to try to see if that can more specifically up some students. Um, and then they are, um, also using, uh, a, a different, uh, teacher-based Wilson reading for some other kids. But so they're different programming, it's all supposed to be individualized. But our struggle is staffing at the moment for special ed. Uh, because we've had vacancies, um, and signing bonuses didn't attract folks. Um, we're working to try to train folks and get folks licensed in different shortage areas. It's, um, it's gonna remain a challenge, I don't think it's gonna go away.
Thank you, um, unfortunate news, though. Um, one thing I note, um, when you were going through the providing curriculum aligned with state standards slide, I was just wondering, um, it kinda came to mind was, how many of these are done through consultant work? And do you roughly know how many, um, educational consultants we have?
Yes, so, um... All curriculum is implemented at the building level, uh, building principals are lead learners on this. And so, for example, thinking elementary school first, you have the Wonders Language Arts Curriculum here, and you have Ready Math as the mathematics curriculum. Um, both of those curricula, we do have, uh, external consultants that help with the instruction. So there's Hill for Literacy, uh, that supports the instruction on, uh, reading and language arts. Um, they actually work with us up through grade eight. Um, we also work with a group, um, called Looney Math, and they support mathematics, uh, instruction K-five, that's really their, their focus area. Um, on occasion, when you adopt a program, uh, you can also work with the publisher to bring in. They'll bring in their own teachers who are expert in their curriculum. So we have worked with curriculum associates, who are the publishers of, uh, iReady, and they provide, um, training and support. It's generally more of like the traditional PD support, where it might be a professional development day, where Looney Math and, um, Hill for Literacy are push-in type. They'll come in and lead either teacher teams or do, uh, in-the-moment training. Uh, just this week, I was at ERS and are, are walking through, and one of the consultants was doing a demonstration lesson. So the teachers were in the classroom, but the consultant was teaching the group, and so they could see the instructional approach. Uh, those are our main drivers at the elementary, uh, level. Uh, Hill for Literacy does support mathematics instruction at the middle school. Um, we also have a group called Instruction Partners that has supported secondary level over the past three years. Their role is not as intense by any means as the first two I mentioned. But, uh, it's a quick rundown.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, one thing, um, when you were talking about social-emotional learning and mental health, I actually thought that might be a great opportunity to show some of the programming that might be happening with the school committee. Um, as somebody who is involved, as you know, previously on the school committee, um, I see this as an opportunity to show the school committee some of the social-emotional learning techniques that are happening within the district. Um, and I think having that presentation, that understanding of like, oh, this is what's happening, this is what they're teaching our kids, will help present them with more information, help the public understand what's happening.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it is a conversation we've been having about next year diving into curriculum and programming.
Actually, we answered that one. Oh, the numbers, um, on the enrollment and how that's changed. Actually, I noted this when I was watching the presentation you were giving to the school committee. Um, the, um, you noted that the number is going down for kids choicing out. Um, how much, um, has the number gone down to the number of kids going to the charter school? Or is that number increased? Cause this, this school choice number might be going down in regular contrast.
I see where you're heading. It's also, um, uh, been going down. It has not been increasing to the same level.
Can we get that rough number of what this year is? That'd be appreciated, thank you. Um, and... Yeah, so the last question I had was around, um, student safety and students', um, support. Um, when I was going through the budget, I noticed that school engagement officers, there are a number of cuts in those positions across the district. Um, in the middle school, there's two positions being recommended for cuts. And the high school, it's being cut by four, so it's tied. So could you go into what the rationale was behind that?
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, it's, it's been a position we created to try to, uh, solve an issue. Um, it, you know, to put it in context, hardworking people, but they're not professionals. They're not required to have advanced degrees, they're not required to be licensed, they're not, uh, you know, admin per se. And, uh, particularly at the high school, we know we have a complex situation, and we're trying to, uh... High school needs to look like the middle school as far as how the middle school is currently running. Um, so we are now looking at the composition of the leadership team, um, and how we're responding, uh, to classroom needs, student needs, around areas of discipline and management, and, uh, making the change in how we're gonna go about that. So you'll see there's two Dean positions, um, and, uh, you know, we have the two AP positions. And I think everyone's aware that Mr. House is becoming the Director of Secondary Education. So we anticipate shifting how, how that process works at the high school.
Are there any other, um, investments you're making in student safety in the school district that you wanna know?
Well, you know, we should point out that, you know, we, we are pleased to help fund the SROs. Um, you know, so we, we pay eighty thousand dollars for the SROs in our schools, and we'll continue to do that. And the chief and I, uh, have spent, we just had a meeting together at the high school's parents around, uh, March thirteenth issue. Um, you know, that's a critical investment. Um, I've always been a strong supporter of SROs at our school and, and police involvement in general. Uh, so that continues. Um, you know, just recently, we talked about additional training and cost, and the chief, uh, informed me that that stuff can be done at no cost. Um, so that's great, because, uh, after some of our media attention, uh, there are certainly many vendors who reached out with, hey, we can do this and we can do that.
It's by all is the way.
Well, and the chief says, yeah, but I can get that for you, uh, you know, regional trainers and et cetera, and I'm not gonna have to pay for it. So, um, great partnership, absolutely super.
All right, well, that's, that concludes my questions at the moment, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilor Ryan, that's, those are great questions. Is there anybody else at the table who has any questions? Councilor McEddy?
Did you wanna go first?
Did you have a question?
I don't have a question.
Okay. So just what is the bottom line then in the increase in the budget? I, I think I put down about eleven and a half percent increase.
Sounds about right.
About right.
So, I mean, I look at the, I hate to say it, but every year, I, I look at the MCAS results to see how we're doing, to see if there's been any progress. And our MCAS results are pretty low. Now, tell me if there's some other way we should be gauging the progress over there. That's the only way I know of to gauge whether we're making progress, improvements, is to look at the MCAS scores.
I, I think the MCAS is a great measure of looking at, uh, the degree, the extent to which students, you know, can do math, language arts, and science. And so I fully embrace using that as a measure. Uh, and like I pointed out, we're actually seeing, uh, some early signs of growth that are really good news for, at our middle school level. And we're seeing in some of our other assessments, a return to, uh, the trajectory we were excited about before the pandemic. Um, so I would never say that we shouldn't look at that, we absolutely should. Um, fifty percent is a pretty darn rigorous, um, but we absolutely should start to see improvement. You know, I would point out that this, we're asking for the bare minimum. I'm not going a cent over it, I recognize it's a, you know, extreme investment, but it's, it's essentially what the law requires. Um, we certainly have lots of needs, our scores show those needs. I've never been one to say that money solves all those problems, but you do need to have these programs, you do need to have this training, we do need to have curriculum, and we certainly know we're, we are not alive at any of it. Um, there are precursor indications of progress across the district. Uh, foundational pieces are in place. You know, I've said many a times, our high school is the one, what we're remaining school that really is not in the stable place it needs to be. Our middle schools made progress faster than we thought it would. Some of our elementary schools are typically happening with the direction ERS has taken the last couple of years. So, um, I don't think we're at a place where we're gonna say, hey, we can't ever see improvement on the MCAS, because it's just not true. I also would point out, we do have students in our schools that do quite well on the MCAS. And it's really important for families to understand that, like, our kids are doing quite well. Um, and this is a percentage. And so, yes, there are larger numbers that are still struggling, but there are kids who do quite, quite well. Uh, and so we just wanna move that distribution to get more kids doing well. So, you know, it is part of the equation, is the funding.
It's always been my philosophy, if something's not working, try something else. Just keep trying something else till something clicks and it works. And, I, I mean, I've been looking at it, and we're not, doesn't, to me, it doesn't feel like we're getting any better than when the day the state took off.
Well, um, you can, you know, certainly write to that opinion. I would, I would say from inside the school district, um, there are a lot of organizational structures that are in place that are super important, that work. Uh, there's been a lot of dramatic improvements in those. I agree with you on the science part of, like, change things until it works. You know, we call it action research, right? And so just because something worked in one place, and then you try to replicate it, doesn't mean it's gonna work in a second place. So you have to put things in place, implement it, and this is why the investment in data is so important. We need to know the extent to which things are actually happening, right? So we have a curriculum, but are teachers following it every day? Do they understand how to actually deliver it? And then you put, let's be real, like, we have turnover. So you train folks, they leave, and I have new folks. So we have to create systems that train the new folks to get them up to speed where the people who are still with us are, so that we can continue to make progress. And if you have whole-scale change, you don't make the progress. So that's part of the issue, we have to stabilize. That's why when I talk in my presentations, it actually is a big deal that I've been here five years. That matters a lot. It matters that I have principals that have been here, it matters that I have folks sitting back here that were principals that are now part of the central office team supporting new principals. Because there's consistency, right? People begin to know how we wanna get it done and create that system. Um, the turnover's a problem, and it tends to be connected to not having the right leader. You may have noticed, I've become kind of aggressive around that with some of the schools in the last couple of years. And I get criticized for it, but if the person isn't successful, I'm gonna lose staff, and that's what happens. Uh, and so we need to get the right leader, so we keep teachers, support teachers, and kids are gonna start to learn at higher levels. It's all, it's very complicated, it sounds easy to talk about it, but in reality, there's so many moving parts. But it does take good leaders, great teachers, good curriculum, good assessments, data systems to tell you how all these things are working, and we're gonna see improvement. In the schools where those pieces are being pulled together quicker, our middle school's an example, it's gonna move faster. But it is incredibly complicated, and I can understand, you know, your perspective.
So you think the teachers leaving are because of leadership? So you think the teachers leaving are because of leadership?
I think there's a whole, whole group of issues with teachers leaving. Some of it is like, hey, I'm not, this is not the kind of district I wanna work in. We are a ninety percent high-need school district. That is different than going to Lexington, Mass. I'll be very honest with you, my career, I never would ever chose to work in Lexington, Mass. Not for me. It's just not my environment. It's a different kind of educational system. Like it, hate it, whatever, it's just different. Some people wanna be in Southbridge. Those are the people we have to hire, right? We have to find those people. Some of them are more recent principal choices, are people who I think are gonna stay long after I'm out of here. And that's purposeful, right? Like, we need to get people who've been here, wanna stay here, are gonna grow here. That is part of the plan. And now half the world doesn't believe anything I say anymore. I watch all the meetings. I hear what people say about me. I read the newspapers. But in truth, I'm trying to work myself out a job, right? That's that's what I'm trying to do here. And so, yes, leaders matter, but then there are other conditions. This pandemic, I'm married to a first-grade teacher, so I hear, you know, at home what this means to teachers and dealing with this stuff and see what principals tell me. I walk into schools. Education has never been a harder job. It's so stressful and kids are dysregulated. We had a kid just register last week who who came from another state. It appears to us that child never left their house, their little kid. They spent the last three years in their house. And they just started school. They don't really know what a grocery store is. Like, this is the new world. So some people are getting out of education. Some people don't like urban education. Some people don't like their principal. Some people think the receiver's a jerk. Like, there's, people leave for different reasons. We're trying to get ahead of that, trying to figure that out. We are trying, you know, I've got good leaders who are keeping people. And my perspective, when I was a teacher, is you work for your principal. You don't work for the central office guy. Superintendent walks through once in a while, but you see your principal every day. So if I can get that right leader there, that does matter. So I do put a lot of onus on him.
Well, I know that when the state took over, I, at the time, I felt that if they're gonna take us over, then they should pay for it. And it seems to me, if we have to keep putting money into this, I mean, you gave us a lot of numbers here about how much we have to contribute to this. And you compared it to other towns, but we're under receivership. And if the state's taking us over, then the state should pay for it. Otherwise, you're just, you're just, you know, switching one bureaucratic system for for another one, but we still have to keep paying for it. The other question, the last question that I did have was, you have this percentage of Hispanic staff. What's the percentage of Hispanic students over this up at the high school?
About sixty-five percent.
Sixty-seven percent? Maybe even a little higher.
So the staff is at nineteen percent. That's the staff. That's the overall staff.
That's all staff, right? So that's education.
Teachers?
Nope, but I do have a slide because I know.
But I mean, at sixty percent, I would think that we want the Hispanic staff to be much greater than that.
Yeah, that would be the goal. I would say that we're three times the state average. And, you know, I'm Cuban-American. I can tell you, I'm a rare Latino superintendent, like, across the country.
No?
There's not too many of them.
Not for that one.
No, no, Pide. Okay, what do you know? But, um, yeah, so across the country, there, you know, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the slide. There's not a lot of Hispanics in education in general. We're triple the state average. There is a movement, like, we are attracting folks who wanna work here. There's a second slide set, so I'll put you with that. If Councilor Rivas had asked about this, um, page thirty-three, it just breaks it down for you by job category. The first box is white teacher, white staff members. The second is Hispanic. The third is African-American. And this shows you by job category and the actual number of people. You know, just trying to be transparent of like what it is. It's much better than other districts.
It has increased in the last four years.
Significantly. It is important. It's important, too, to have, like, kids need to see all kinds of people. And in most of them, they gotta be good teachers.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McEddy. Um, before I go out there, I just had a couple of questions myself. Kind of piggyback on that last one since you brought it up. Is there any, um, oh, Puerto Rico's owned by the United States. Is there any sort of recruitment going on for teachers down there? Cause I do know that the education system is very underpaid down there. And that's a lot of, and the people who do work in education really care about what they're doing because they're, you know, still doing it even though they're getting paid so little. Um, is there any sort of connection there? We're trying to bring teachers, bilingual teachers up to the states or?
Great question. I have staff members in audience that would love for me to send them down.
Oh, that'd be.
But, you know, we do have some folks that, and this honestly is a part of, or the advantage of receivership is I'm able to bring people in and help them facilitate trying to get licensed in an environment where other districts might not risk the effort. But it's a huge challenge.
Yeah.
For us trying to run a dual-language program, getting folks who are fluent speakers of Spanish, who can teach the Spanish language is very difficult. Ideally, if they are fluent in both languages, even more difficult. You know, but it's a struggle we do every year. Every year, we're trying to get and keep those folks in in that program. But no, we don't have a direct connection. We did try once hiring an individual from Spain through a department program. It turned out to be what I call a cultural disaster. Like, the individual just did not understand American education and and what our schools would be like. And it was, and the poor person moved from Spain to, like, Southbridge and then started teaching high school. Couldn't, you know, very little prep, and it didn't, it wasn't a good fit. And the poor person really struggled.
Yeah, I can understand. Yeah, with those struggles, too, of hiring people fluent and bilingual, it's just the pandemic overall has had some people quit education altogether. So I mean, you see it in all different professions. Couple of questions, kinda all over the place. Um, the Ford F-250, the hundred thousand dollars. Is it really a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
For a Ford F-250 with a plow? Okay.
Part of it is you're paying for the body of the truck?
Yeah.
And then there's that big tool storage and then all of the requirements for plowing.
Okay.
But if you were to go buy an F-250 as a residential vehicle, you're looking at seventy-five grand.
Okay, no, that's that's great. Um, we did see quotes for that before. Yeah, awesome. Um, I was looking at some of the positions and, uh, I see you've moved just a couple of things around in central office. It was, uh, you've you've gotten rid of a point seventy-five communications specialist, but then you've added another person to payroll specialist. Is that kind of, do those things go hand in hand or, I'm just curious why you have more payroll now?
Yeah, so, uh, working with the previous town manager, uh, we have a lot of staff that are on board. You know, we're over four hundred staffers. Last year, we hired over a hundred staffers, right? So there's a lot of back and forth. And, uh, we can appreciate the fact that town staff trying to manage that situation and then follow up on people who choose not to fill out health insurance forms or make mistakes on forms. There was a lot of back and forth and ultimately, the request was made to us, like, can you please take over benefits? We don't have the capacity to handle the volume of benefit management that you have.
Okay.
And so I told them I'd do so. We've hired someone. We've trained someone. We, there's another benefit for us in this. This person now allows us to have backup capacity on our payroll, which is a very good feeling, because we had one person in our district that could do our payroll. Now we have several, you know, two people, and then of course Seth's staff could do it. So it gave us a little bit of redundancy, but so we added that. The communications piece, we removed. Uh, we do have a contract right now that we're looking at perhaps not maintaining, but with an outside communications firm. And Dr. Ortiz, who some of you know, also has been leading our efforts to do some communication.
That's great. Um, then I go to the high school side and I, I'm just curious. Most people know I used to, at one time long ago, be involved with the auditorium there. It says that the drama teacher is being cut to zero. Is?
Well, what we've done is, um, that person, we're moving into an English position.
Oh, okay.
So they they can still, I'm hoping, will still be part of our staff. But it's a small high school and having an individual who only taught drama classes when we've been literally outsourcing class teachers didn't make a lot of sense. So we've had that person take on more English classes.
Okay, so there's still a drama program then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, awesome.
You know, we've increased funding for drama. Um, I've helped pay more for sets and offset some costs during the pandemic. I'm a full supporter of that. It's just, I can't support having that person teach five drama classes a day.
Sure, yeah. You 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 hear things and you get clarification, like, is drama gone? And I'm like, that just can't be. There's a million-dollar auditorium or more in there, so I'm sure you're utilizing it.
We need more drama, more music.
Yeah.
Better athletics. All those things are important for us.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and then, uh, I see where it says nurses from two to one. Does that have something to do with COVID ending?
Yes, so I had a nurse that we had moved out of a school position to be full-time in charge of the COVID response. And of course, you know, thank goodness.
Yeah.
You know, that's not really warranted at this point. And so we're gonna put that up to, take it out and and put her back into the building.
Okay, um, that seems good. Now, the the last part, the more important part is, uh, over the years, being involved with different boards and things, the word minimum school expenditure is the word that I used to use. I don't see it here. Uh, I I'm sure you've given it here and you said you're not looking for a penny more. Is, am I on the same page that, like, what you're requesting is the bottom line minimum school expenditure? Like, a penny less, we would be potentially in violation of losing our chapter seventy funds?
Yeah, I, it would be, in theory, like, they're not gonna do that for a penny less.
Of course.
But, yes, yes.
Okay, cause I mean, I'm personally am in support of minimum school expenditure and I appreciate this whole presentation, uh, very much that you came forward looking for the minimum. Because we're, we're trying to, you know, with the fire station and the trash curbside problems and stuff like that, you know, we've, and you say you watch the meetings. We're trying to find ways to save money. So this is really, uh, refreshing to see for me. And I know you mentioned the school committee meeting, how you're picking up some of the costs for the health insurance, it's seventy-thirty. And that's all very good, um, as far as I'm concerned. So, and when it comes down to that, asking for minimum, it is what it is. I mean, they can't really change. But it's great to see that we're working together on that that bottom dollar budget item. So that should be it for me for now, but I I do have, Councilor Steve, you had questions on it? Was it page eight?
I've got a ton of questions, actually.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to. Go ahead now.
Okay. Um, well, since we're starting, since we're talking about the budget, um, one of the things that I've been concerned about, going into this particular budget cycle, it seems like we are getting harder by costs and it's not just your your budget to cross the board. Um, so I was curious to know, um, how much of the salary increase at this point over last year is is just COLA? Cause I was thinking maybe that might be one way to do this, across the board, no COLA raises. That might help. And, no, I I don't wanna get rid of people.
So I don't know if you're understanding our circumstance. What what our budget and all the staff that are here fit in under the minimum required spending. So they're all part of it. So that includes their current salaries and and any projected future contracts. So we're, we're, we've come to the table that this is the state-required spending levels. And this program meets that. And then if you look at my budget proposals over years, I am not one to come in with bombastic, huge, ridiculous ask, trying to play some kind of poker over the budget. It's, this is what it is. So I'm here coming into this, understanding the Student Opportunity Act, and again, trying to pay attention to the local circumstance. I know that this enough is a substantial lift for the community. So we work to make sure that our ask, um, you know, is is funded by the request. So that's what I'm saying, uh, you know, looking to, there's no savings on the school side that fixes that problem.
And I appreciate that. I think we're, with the school, it's kind of a weird circumstance that we have the state telling us we have to spend a certain amount.
And as for all communities.
And I, I get that, I get that. As opposed to the, all the rest of the town budget where we have a lot more flexibility. So I understand, I understand that. I do understand that. I decided it'd be interesting to know exactly how much of the, do you have the idea what that would be? So we can kind of compare it to everywhere else.
Um, our overall salaries is going up two point nine million on a, from twenty point eight million to twenty-three point seven eight million.
But that's with the addition of a lot of staff, too. Not just, not just COLA raises.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm trying, trying to split that out.
But I, we can look at and see what is the cost related to just salary increases.
Also, I was kind of, I was kind of looking at the budget itself. I noticed that the way the layout is especially in these pages. Um, it's page fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. The way you, the way you break out the positions you were following, categories and tax, had nothing to do with the way it's broken out in the charts below. Which makes it a little hard to compare what elements of the salaries of staffing actually are. You've got your description of who's doing what. And then, for example, like, I noted, for example, that that teachers and educational assistants and custodians are not actually listed in the categories in the charts. And then there's like seven different things that are in the charts that are not listed in the categories on top.
What page are you on, Councilor?
Uh, fifty. The budget itself.
So there are many ways to look at staffing. We tried to provide three views. Of looking at it by sort of type of position. The, the, um, location of the position. Yep, and then also sort of the type of category and how does that differentiate between schools and sort of district-wide type positions.
Well, my question, for example, is, like, even if you take a look at the the general one, the first chapter, first chart, you mentioned school, student support and support staff. And, um, student, support staff are listed up in top in the descriptions, who's in it, but student support's not. You know, and that's what I'm trying to say, is if the categories that you list in the charts and the categories that you list up here in the bold often don't correspond to each other. So it's kind of hard to see exactly who's doing what and who's where and that's, that's, that's one of the issues I was, I was raising.
Sure. Well, I, I appreciate your point in that. But now, we endeavor to try to provide as much information as possible. You know, and and then I mentioned Councilor Ryan had helped work with us to kind of develop some tables that were more responsive. The budget book has gone from our first year of about twenty-two pages and now we are providing, you know, seventy-three pages. And then a, you know, forty-two page handout.
Never hear me complain about information.
Understood.
Uh, going to the budget itself, I was curious as to why there are so many lines in here where you have zero, you've zeroed them out and then you kind of lumped into more general lines that it, uh, let's see, for example, like, for example, the things that really don't really bring back, for example, the substitutes, where you've got lines of fifty thousand dollars for substitute, but short-term or long-term substitutes are gone. So, and they're in every, they're in every, they're in every school. But it's, that just was a line that jumped out at me. And then you've got some of these other things, like, you've mentioned you've lumped together the teacher salaries for both the middle and the high schools, and then you've got them broken out here for zeros for various sub, various departments' teacher salaries. I'm just curious, is that, is that something that's an older system of doing things that just hasn't disappeared yet or?
So, um, we, uh, when the system was created, there were a number of different accounts created. We have, in an attempt to be as transparent as possible, included all accounts that have been created. Um, and some of them, there have not been expenses or budgets applied to them, but we included them anyway for, for an abundance of transparency, but I can recognize that it may not be needed to be zero, you know, to show a zero expense and zero budget account. So we can exclude that next year, but we didn't wanna exclude anything.
Maybe we need to just get rid of some of these lineups and probably make it easier for you guys in the budget to, when they?
Well, we, well, when accounts are created in our financial system, they are now created. Well, we, well, when accounts are created in our financial system, they are now created permanently. So if you run a report, they're there.
Okay.
So, um.
Sounds like something, the, 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 the thing going on in the computer system, that's may, which may not be your issue. Um, okay, and to go back to the presentation, I've got a bunch of questions there. Um, one of the things that you, you mentioned the dual language, um, program. Um, I was curious as to know, how has that changed over the years in terms of standards, concerns, or goals? Um, I know that I remember correctly, the whole idea was to expand it basically as the kids age into it.
Mm-hmm. So we'll be going into grade seven next year. So, uh, you know, it continues. There's actually a low of student enrollment in like grades four and I guess three and four, but much more in the lower grades. We already have ten kids sign up for next year, um, you know, for anticipated kindergarten in the program. Um, so it, you know, it it continues, I think, to improve year over year. There's been some more curriculum alignment with the, you know, mainstream English curriculum. Uh, the expansion into middle school this year went well in grade six and so now we're planning at grade seven.
Is that having any impact on, um, the the special needs students that would otherwise be going through the dual languages?
Uh, no. So, uh, it is one of the areas of difficulties identifying when a student may not be responding to instruction. Uh, is that because of inherent learning disability? Is it a language issue? And so feathering that out is is difficult. And uh, I I would argue we still need to improve that because really twenty six percent of our students are considered uh, special education students. Uh, I feel it's a little high. Um, you know, what we're able to do in in the dual language class is provide students with an opportunity, um, if they're a Spanish speaker, now they they're in a, uh, a social position of being the person with more knowledge with the English learner in that class. And so it helps equalize some things at times. Uh, both languages are valued and kids are able to continue to grow. What we do look at is the performance of those kids in that program versus the performance of kids in our other programs and there's no major gaps.
That's good.
Uh, yeah, it's something we look at. Uh, we'd like all performances to be higher. That's something that, uh, we absolutely wanna see.
I mean, actually, that ties into the next question. You mentioned the meeting expectations and turnaround kind of angle. And I honestly, I see fifty percent as pretty low, as your goal. Um, I was curious.
Profession?
Yeah. Well, you mentioned, you mentioned meeting expectations as fifty percent being the goal.
Yeah, it'd be significant.
And it's currently thirteen and ten and two point four. Um, and I realize that's a big, a big jump from where they are now. I get that. Um, do you have enough idea of what timeframe it would take to reach like seventy five or eighty percent proficiency?
No.
I mean, cuz that's what I think our, that's really what I think our school should be doing, is aiming to get all of the kids proficient in these skills.
Of course.
Cuz they're graduated and they're gonna be our leaders.
The core, the core of the approach that we're taking is called multi-tiered, uh, systems of support. The concept is kids not doing well with your regular instruction.
Sure.
There's another layer of, and it can be the classroom teacher that provides it, but a different instructional approach. If that doesn't work, then there's even more focused instruction in the support. The concept is, yes, all kids need to be proficient. Um, it is a heavy lift to get all kids to proficient. Um, but, you know, our goals are set because we do believe this, like it can happen. But it it's certainly, uh, difficult. And I, I mean, to tell you how long it takes to get to seventy five, I don't know. That's, that's.
I mean, cuz how, how would that number compare to, say, some of the schools that are not?
Well, um, it's gonna depend on which school districts you look at. Um, at the moment, obviously, uh, we're being one of the highest needs districts in the state.
I get that.
So, uh, when we compare to our peers, like what I would point out, I use the middle school example. Compared to fifteen comparisons districts, they were number one in math growth last year. Which is the first time ever we've been number one in much of anything, right? So that's a pretty good thing. Um, so we're gonna have to see as we progress how we compare to those reference districts. Um, you know, well, we have a long way to go. That's why we talk about, you know, the funding and minimum funding levels. Uh, I'm, I'm not a fan of saying it's just about more money, but we're talking where we have the minimum funding level. Those districts you mentioned around us, some of them are at a hundred and thirty four percent.
No, I I saw that, yeah.
You know, and so it's like, what other resources could we bring to bear if I had another thirty percent on top of what I'm asking for tonight?
Oh, absolutely. And I can think we can say that about all of the things.
Actually.
Doing roadwork and all kinds of other stuff.
Correct. I don't disagree with you.
Do that, I agree with that.
Um.
I'm just curious, just talking, speaking about the, uh, the various sources that you do for assessment. Um, how do you use the data to provide, that the test provide? And what kinds of changes are you hoping to see from that?
So it depends on the type of test, right? So when you're talking about like a state mastery test, that kind of gives you a good idea of what kids know and are able to do when they took that test. Less helpful six months later in class.
Right.
So what we call a formative assessment, something that a teacher, uh, is using in the moment, can give them immediate feedback on what kids know and what they can do. And then they can change instruction based on that. So when we again talk about that tiered system, most of that is driven by, well, without formative assessment. There are, um, some quick assessments that we use, uh, kind of dipstick measures, particularly with our little kids. You may have heard me talk about the dibbles, um, it's the dynamic indicators of basic literacy. Uh, and essentially, uh, that looks at all the core skills. And so teachers assign that. And then what we do is we put kids into a specialized instruction program and then they do what they call progress monitoring, very quick, regular assessment. And track that to see which kids grow and which kids didn't. If it didn't grow, now we need a different, different approach. Um, so we look, we're able to look at the percentage of kids who moved based on that progress monitoring, which kids didn't, which kids, um, you know, are, need to be accelerated, et cetera. And so they're always making decisions based on what they're gathering from that and what instruction they provide to kids.
Um, as I understand things like the iReads, they, they're done like, like three times a year?
Well, now you're talking about a benchmark assessment. And so yes, benchmark assessments are typically done in the fall, the winter and the spring. Uh, iRead and that platform can assign based on the first assessment, uh, a personalized digital pathway for kids to do some individualized practice. And those assessments based on whether or not how much time a kid spends in the content, how many answers they get right. Where they struggle, they can automate and give them a more personalized learning experience. So we use that to augment instruction. We don't rely on that as our primary instruction.
Well, cuz I, cuz I notice that I've heard about that from other districts as they see, um, especially at the beginning of the year. There are often issues with kids have actually fallen backwards when they go back to school after the break.
Well, that, that's a known phenomenon across schools, this backward summer slide. And so that's why a lot of, uh, districts are trying to provide summer opportunities for kids. It's not unusual.
Where, where does our district stand as far as that goes?
Well, we've been able to secure, uh, grant funding, uh, for the past three years to provide summer programming for kids. We also provide after school programming for kids. You might recall in the fall, you know, we were bragging a little bit because we got over a million four and grant funds, uh, brought into the district from the work of, of the team to do that. And after school and before school is part of that program and summer school.
Okay. Um, and the section where you were talking about various kinds of counselors, I'm just curious, which I'm gonna add on is, what exactly is the difference between an adjustment counselor and a guidance counselor? When we were in high school, all we had was guidance.
So I, I think the easiest way to answer that is guidance counselors more, uh, while they're capable of helping with, um, personal issues and counseling kind of, uh, an adjustment counselor is like a social worker.
Okay.
And the guidance counselor has a, a school and career aspect to it, more about, you know, helping to plan in the future. Where, where are you headed? You know, which is plot, your plan. Although they can provide counseling to the noticing, social work strategy.
So if that's the case, then if we have adjustment counselors and school psychologists, um, and I realize that there is definitely mental health needs and they should be, I agree. Um, where are we? How, how much of the, how much service, how much ser- service are the kids getting from these various, um, various kinds of counselors? And how are we avoiding making sure that they're just not coordinating each other?
Well, there's coordination, right? So there's this process called the Student Success Team, which, uh, looks at students and tracks the interventions that are being put into place and whether or not they're impactful. So that team of teachers and staff members follows each kid and looks to see, uh, how they're responding. In our City Connects program, they actually have a data-driven approach to also know which outside providers are working with our kids. And so they can look at that information and how, um, and that City Connect person is part of that SST team. So they know what outside people are working with the kids, which inside people are working with kids. We get releases from families so that the inside, uh, counselors that we have can talk to outside counselors. Um, we also hook kids up now with remote counseling. Uh, you know, we got, well, it sounds like a lot and it's not even a half is probably what families need.
That's probably true, unfortunately. Oh, and I guess it's kind of tiny, correct? I was curious why, um, you mentioned that the state foundation, but I guess it's more a pressure to staff. Um, that it includes state special education assessments for, for kids that are going to state institutions. Why isn't it, why doesn't it cover the other spread kids? Cuz most of the kids go to private institutions in one formula or another?
Uh, uh, basically the, the, the formula gives the money for two districts cuz districts are going to pay these private nonprofit institutions to serve students without a district. Um, this assessment here, uh, we never receive the money because the state uses that money to pay for their own institutions. Cuz they're running them.
Oh, okay.
Um, so it's their way of recouping some of the dollars.
So, so we are actually getting paid for the kids that are going to private institutions?
Yes.
Okay. Does it actually cover the costs?
No.
I didn't think so.
But there, there are other, um, funding methodologies for that. There's additional aid, it's something called circuit breaker.
Yeah.
To help offset, um, very expensive needs, but it's not, um.
It's not even close to what we actually have.
No.
No, I've noticed that. And the same, the same really is true with the charter tuition, cuz I noticed that the numbers for charter tuition, um, reimbursement have been falling, but our charter tuition is going up.
Yes, and that is.
That's gotta be worse and worse.
Well, and, and that is designed on purpose, um, because the charter tuition reimbursement is meant to be three years and phasing out every year. Um, it's not permanent aid to support that cost.
But it, but that means, in other words, we are draining our public schools to go to a school that is claimed to be public, but is not in fact. In many instances. And that's the problem, is it is sucking money out of our schools to go someplace else.
Well, our cost will shift.
And it's the problem. I think that's all the questions I have there.
Okay, awesome. Um, yeah, and and so the, no, I, I do see, I, just there was a question at the table I'm gonna go to first real quick. Um, just a, a previous comment you made, if, uh, a low income, high needs district like us was had eighty percent for math and English and MCAS, I mean, you could write a mo- write a script for a movie and give you every award in the book. That's like, out of control, unheard of. I mean, that would be fantastic, but.
That's what we should aim for.
But, yeah.
I would love to see our district do that.
That wouldn't come so long after receivership is over, I think.
Back in Foxborough and Lexington and the Dusty, it'd be good.
Um.
Yeah, how much did we spend in, um, emergency repairs last year?
It's a good question.
Uh, it was around three hundred thousand dollars.
And how about this year so far?
We have spent, um, I wanna say about two hundred fifty thousand so far and we have earmarks, or maybe fifty thousand used for the rest of the next couple of months.
Does that include our government? It does not.
Um, but before I move forward, there was, there was one question I, I did come up with in the middle of all this. And just maybe cuz, uh, maybe everybody doesn't understand, myself included with the capital, we're, I'm on page seventy at the end here. Um, I know you're only asking for five fifty in capital and I see capital needs as being nine point two million. Is that like a wish list sort of thing or?
I'm, I'm glad you asked.
Okay.
So, yeah, last year, you might recall in, in the budget conversation, there's a set of money given, uh, to the school district so that we could contract with a group to work on the master plan, uh, which we have identified a company, uh, to begin that work. The idea is to, uh, they have to analyze the school district's buildings, modernize the pricing. Unfortunately, twenty nineteen pricing is very far off probably where we are in twenty twenty three. But, um, more importantly, go, walk us through the process of also identifying at some point engage with the council, how we're gonna use the buildings in the future. Because their, a master plan has to be in place specifying number of schools, uh, enrollment projections, all that kind of structured things, so that we can then go to the state and say, hey, we need to do, you know, three school roofs, for example. And, uh, we would like to get state reimbursement or state funding, um, to do this project. Or it might be roofs, windows, doors, boilers, but it, but whatever, you build a package, uh, and go to the Massachusetts School Building Authority and, uh, you know, depending on who you talk to, we're gonna get between sixty percent, eighty percent of funding on the dollar. So for us to go and, and tackle some of these projects, we're paying a hundred percent right now.
Yeah.
So, meeting the requirements of the Massachusetts School Building Authority, getting a master plan, really packaging this together will, in the long run, save a lot of money. Whereas trying to, you know, fix things, uh, let's say if we said, oh, we could do the windows ourselves, we're gonna do one school at a time. Well, we're gonna pay a hundred percent of that cost at a time and it's gonna take a long time. Whereas we could package it all together and get at a minimum sixty percent, probably higher than that.
So the ninety point two isn't something you're gonna spend like out of this year's operating budget? It is more of like a wish list again?
User needs.
Putting together to hopefully, cuz I've, I've watched the presentation and, and surely you could potentially look into building an elementary school and use the other existing buildings for something else. And I'm all for that for, for the students. Yeah, big decision. So I'm, I'm, uh, glad for that. I have a list here. I wanna make sure I get to Chairman Daniel and then Counselor Ryan and then, uh, we'll take it from there. So, Mr. Daniel, Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you to, I guess, um, I think this is the fourth time I've heard the presentation and it's finally starting to set in. And I appreciate it. Thank you, Pierre. I do appreciate it. Um, can you talk a little bit about the transportation cost going up? You know, six hundred and fifty thousand is a lot. It's a lot of gas.
Yeah, for sure. And, uh, you know, I'll, I'll have Seth give you the details, but I know we're in the last year of our contract. And think about all the cost that companies incurred over the last few years. We went out to bid for a contract, uh, three years ago and, uh, had one responded. Um, so we are not anticipating a large interest in that bid. And, uh, I know they're likely to recoup some costs as we go through it. Did you wanna break it down, Seth?
Yeah, um, and so the contract that when we went out to bid, that was in, you can think about this, this is the spring twenty twenty. And we were able to get a three-year contract that had a zero percent increase in the first year, a two percent increase, and then a two percent increase. So, um, we are anticipating will be a higher increase next year. We are about to start that bid process the coming months. As soon as we find out more details, we'll obviously share it with you once, once we go through that process. But, um, this is an estimate at this time and, um, uh, again, we hope to have this ironed out. By the time you end this week.
Great. And the second question I have is, um, I noticed that contract services have dropped by six hundred thousand dollars. Did you assume those in an in-house manner, essentially taking a wash or a savings in that savings?
I think it's teachers, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, we, we had a, uh, relationship with an outside vendor providing special education support. And instead, we have staff that are currently providing that, uh, same support. So it's a flip flop. Uh, and candidly, um, you know, it's, uh, looking for people that write skill set. It's a very specific type of special education programming and, uh, you know, when you have your own staff, it is a less expensive way to roll. Uh, but it's not so easy to find these people.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, move to Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you to, Dr. Valar, actually, Counselor Steve's questions, um, got me thinking. What is, um, how many students do we currently have placed out of district for special needs services?
Oh, good. Do you have that off your head?
I wanna say it's a low thirties, but I can.
Uh, we confirm.
Yeah, if you can get me the number, that'd be great. And then also the trend of what that's looking like year over year, um, for out-of-district placement. How much, has the cost been going up for out-of-district placement?
Yep.
And how much has that been going up by?
Um, yes. So, um, in general, the number of students who are out of this replacement has either been level or gone down, except the cost has increased. And, uh, costs for out-of-district placements, um, are in general set by the state. And last summer, they basically gave a one-year warning to all school districts to prepare for a substantial increase of something like fifteen percent. Um, so that's what we are anticipating for next year.
Um, and then you mentioned the circuit and the other reimbursement mechanisms, um, circuit breaker, right? So what, what is the current roughly the reimbursement rate for those students?
Good question. Um, so how circuit breaker works is that the state will reimburse, um, will provide partial reimbursement for students in, uh, for the cost in excess of, I mean, it's a roughly fifty thousand dollars. So for, they will reimburse you if they're at fifty thousand dollars, one dollar. They reimburse you for that one dollar.
Or so anything over and above fifty.
Yeah. Rough estimate of that.
So we do have, and I mentioned the Counselor Daniel's question, so we have like the Connects program at West Street, which is for children with emotional, social-emotional disturbance and significant behavioral issues. That's a program that tries to prevent placing students out and try to keep students in their home school district. We have the PASS program for many of our students with autism at Charlton Street School. Again, trying to provide good quality services to those kids in district. The Discovery Program at Charlton Street does that as well for multi-handicapped students. And then there's Southbridge Academy that keeps kids, again, the idea is always with special education, you wanna give them the least restrictive environment, and that means closest to home as possible. And if you can't do that, and then you go to outplacement. And of course, outplacement can go to various levels of expenditure.
And they, just to clarify too, the reimbursement is only seventy percent roughly of that additional cost? So again, we use that one dollar.
So you only get, so if you get a dollar back, you're only getting seventy cents back?
Correct. And, just to even further complicate it, you get it a year later. So they, you have to, they verify and check all those expenses. You submit it, and so you'll get those expenses a year later. So you need to find the money the first year, and then provide it to the next year.
How many students do we currently have in those other programs to prevent out-of-district placement?
Uh, let's see, we're around, we started with about thirty kids at the academy. We have about eighteen at, uh, between West Street and ERS. I did mention ERS also has a Connects program. And PASS, I think might be ten, but I'd have to double-check.
And then are these, are these all students that would otherwise need to be placed out of district for services?
It's a little tricky because, you know, it depends on their IEP, right? But, um, largely they're there because we can't, can't push them into a classroom. And so absent that program, yeah, then, then we have no program for them, and we'd have to probably work with a collaborative.
Thank you. That's it for my questions.
Okay, um, I'll go to Counselor Steve's one more time, but I do wanna let everybody know we're almost going to eclipse the time of the last school committee meeting. So I think we should try to wrap this up. But Counselor Steve?
I'm gonna go back to the MSBA, a point we're talking about, and go, do we have anything that we could actually upstart the process of a plan for now? I know, I know you have to do the master planning stuff and that stuff, but since, I'm just thinking, because it takes such a long time to get through the process. I know Bartlett is just starting that project. It took them like eight years to get to the process.
Correct. You're right. It is a super-long timeline, but we can't do it without having these pieces in place. They won't entertain our application.
So you can't, you can't, some of the smaller projects?
No.
I was afraid of that.
Yeah.
But on the, we have two programs. One is sort of major emergency repairs, and then there's major renovations in new buildings. The major emergency projects, usually the, the full process from application to funding to completion can take a year and a half. So that's a little faster. So if you want, if we apply for new roofs, for example, it could be possible to move as quickly as a year and a half to two years.
Okay. I know that their, their requirements have changed because Oxford's going through that process now, and they have, they had it put on hold because they're, they just decided to arbitrarily change the years, it was kind of the last minute.
Mr. Shania?
A bunch of nine million dollars, I know, accumulated. Well, I'm gonna use the example you just mentioned about doing the roofs and sending it to, over a couple-year period. We're gonna spend those monies, let's say, two years through the roofs. You might get sixty percent reimbursement. But that sixty percent reimbursement, if our share for a new school says eighty percent, the twenty percent that we're gonna pay could be those roofs. So at some point in time, it has to be looked at, is it penny-wise to spend that money in two years on roofs? That you could, you could bank that money and use it for the town share or the eighty percent reimbursement?
That's why we're required to do this master planning process, because part of that is decision-making, not mine, but the town council will have to see those numbers, because there is an argument to be had here in Southbridge that you don't need to re-aliment your buildings.
Correct.
And, and, you know, there's an argument to say you need that. Um, there's, you know, there's a lot of ways to look at it. But at the end of the day, the town council, the decision-makers, have to see the relationship between those models and the cost. You know, renovating a building, building a new building, there are a lot of costs too. If you're working on a school, can you run school while you're working on that school? Or do you need swing space? So doing this process will give the community more information to hopefully make a really good decision.
Well, I think, you know, the renovating of schools to bring up to today's type of school that we want kids educated in, doing it while students are in schools is a failed event. It's, you've seen that happen here at the junior high, and you've seen it happen at the elementary schools when we did those renovations back twenty-five years ago. Just one more question. We have roughly five hundred students less than ten years ago to where it is today. And you mentioned that, uh, some of the problems that we have today is the failure of leaders, leadership in the schools.
That's in relationship to churn numbers.
You know, with the turnover rate and those kind of things. I blame it starts from the top and rolls down. Is it something that your administration has, is feeling in, in, in getting the quality educators in the schools? The principals, for instance, that just seem to come and go, and come and go, and come and go. And is it, is it something that the administration is feeling that, that needs to make some adjustments in the administrative level?
Well, I appreciate, you know, that required introspection to honestly answer your question. You know, it, it, it's a fair question. You know, there are a lot of challenges. You can drive a mile south, if you're a school principal, and make forty thousand dollars per year.
Correct. I understand.
Right? So geographically, I have an issue right there. It, you know, again, you have to attract leaders who wanna work in this type of district, right? So this is a, a high-needs district that's different than what Woodstock or, you know, whatever, right next door or across the line. But that is a factor. Um, what I've seen and the struggle I've had is, you know, we post positions, and we have an interim high school principal at the moment. I've been looking for a high school principal for four years. Trying, and, and if you were to ask my colleagues in other districts, that's like the hardest leadership position to fill. Why? Well, high school principals have to go to a million things. Like, it's the longest day of any, any school leader. We've got all the events, all this stuff, and it's a complicated environment. So, hardest of work. Is it me? Am I hard to work for? I mean, I'll let you talk to principals and ask them that question. I, I, I actually think they don't mind it. So.
I mean, but.
It's my best interest.
Nobody likes the boss. Nobody likes the boss. You know, and I understand that, especially that. But when I, as a, as a grandfather sees the changeover of principals, and I'll just give an example of Eastford Road. Last year, I think you changed the principal. The principal was love at Eastford Road School, and I think the school did very well with her there, but then she went up to the administration, I believe.
You mean Ms. Scripsack?
I think so.
Yeah, she's working on curriculum right now. She's actually pulling in.
But it seems that when we get those, that staff working in the school that seems to be functioning, and the school's functioning as we as parents and grandparents hope for, they're gone. They moved up to the administration, or they're doing something different. And then they bring somebody, and it starts all over again.
Well, yeah, you know, I guess what I can say to you is, I'm under the gun to get improvement. Um, so it is in my best interest to find people to leave buildings that can be successful. I feel like I treat my principals fairly, but there's certainly hell accounts. Some former principals are sitting back here listening to me as I talk. What we've had is, I think it's a success story in Southbridge. We have two former building principals who were in their buildings for a good period of time that were promoted and now support other building principals, work with teachers directly every day in our district, and are growing the next generation of leaders in the district. That's a new thing for us. Uh, we have, you know, a principal at Charlton Street School who was a teacher here for six years prior, is now the principal. Her assistant principal was a teacher in that building, I think, seven years? And she's the assistant principal. Growth from one end is actually a sign of some health in our district. And, and I'm glad to see that that's happening. The middle school, uh, we'll have, Ms. Cool has been in the administrative team for the past three years. She's going to assume the principalship this year and will be the principal, as Mr. House is helping focus the high school and oversee secondary. So there's a healthy transition. An assistant principal's coming from our teaching ranks to assist in one of our schools in the upcoming year. There is an effort on, I am in earnest trying to find people who are gonna stay here and move them into this role. But they, they certainly have to be committed to the improvement we need to see too. Ms. Scripsack did leave Eastford Road, but she's helping this district tremendously, is very happy in the work that she's doing. Being a principal for the period of time is very hard, very, very hard. But as a result of, for example, her effort, we have now a science curriculum for elementary schools that fills a lot of gaps that we didn't have last year. I hear what you're saying, but, you know, I am trying to make sure we put the right people in the buildings, make sure they have the energy they need to have, make sure that we're starting to accomplish the goals that we're looking to accomplish. It's complicated. I appreciate the question.
Okay, I, I think Counselor Mark, a quick follow-up.
Just quick follow-up. We voted on that master plan a year ago, so I would like you to get started on that. I don't know what's, why it's.
We selected the vendor. It takes a long time. You have to do an RFP.
Okay.
That'd have to be approved by the town.
I hope it doesn't take another year to get this.
I think it will, to be honest. It's a long process.
But you have the money for it.
We have the money, we have the vendor. So, you know, it's go. Like, it's, it's now in the process where the roof's hitting the ground.
No, I, I, Dr. Valar outlined it last year when he did, because he didn't need money from the town to do it. He had extra money coming in from the state to help from finding those capital needs. And part of that was getting the master plan done, and he notified us last year that that would take two, three years to get finalized and through the door.
It's an exciting, positive thing to look forward to. I think the master plan.
I agree.
But, um, uh, I think we'll, we'll go to a vote here now. Um, I just wanted to say thank you very much to everybody who came here from the school district. And Dr. Valar, Mr. Versini, guys, did a, a great job here. You know, we might not always see eye to eye on what you spend the money on, but that is purview of the school committee, and as the receiver, you are the school committee. But I think we definitely, I know I myself support the bottom-line dollar amount you're asking for here tonight. So, uh, just 'cause this is budget season, I'm gonna do a roll call.
I'll have to request one anyways.
Yeah, that's great, Counselor Ryan. And I'm gonna start with you and rotate as the vote goes on. Uh, yes for Counselor Ryan. Um, Mr. Promos?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny, yes. Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
That's us. Five yes, unanimous of all present. And, um, that's great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Valar. Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Five-minute recess, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we can call a recess in five minutes, and then we'll get right to Bay Path. And call the meeting back to order. Um, and we'll be here with agenda item number four, review fiscal year 2024 Bay Path Regional Vocational High School budget in the amount of one million, two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars and zero cents, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented.
So move.
Oh, second.
Okay. Counselor Ryan and Crowes. All right, we'll get right into it.
Nice one. Nice one. My name is Kyle Runner. I'm the proud superintendent of Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical High School. And we have our two Southbridge representatives for school committee here tonight, Mr. Poplaski and Ms. Lunti. So, um, and before you, you should have a copy of the FY24 adopted budget for the town of Southbridge. On the first slide, we identify the funding sources as chapter seventy and chapter seventy-one estimates that are based off the governor's budget submitted on February twenty-third. The estimated chapter seventy funding for FY24 is fifteen million, two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. The estimated chapter seventy-one funding for FY24 is one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. As you'll see, that was a significant increase over the years passed as the state moved to fund ninety percent of regional transportation fund this year. Not quite the one hundred, but getting closer. And again, these are preliminary estimates, subject to change as the House and Senate deliver it. Slide three shows the impact on Bay Path. You can see our FY24 and FY23 comparison here. Chapter seventy increased by one million, three hundred twenty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-nine. The minimum contribution increased by seven hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And our required net school spending increased two million, forty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Slide four, FY24 total budget for assessment is twenty-eight million, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars. Our member-town assessments are at the minimum. The budget includes a debt service assessment of one million, five hundred fifty-five, five hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and three dollars. And our operational budget does not require funds above the minimum contributions by our member communities. And a total member assessment for our ten towns is twelve million, three hundred ninety-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. It's important to note that all the assessments are at the minimum. The minimum contribution levels that each town must contribute have increased collectively by seven hundred eighteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. And that our member-town transportation assessment has been reduced by three hundred thousand, reflecting the use of our regional transportation reimbursement fund that was set up a few years ago. Slide six shows financial highlights, total chapter seventy revenue of fourteen million, two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Our school choice assessment is two hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. And our chapter seventy-one plus the eighty, one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four. We propose using seventy-five thousand from our E and D access and deficiency fund to continue funding our OPEB liability. In years past, that's been fifty thousand, and on advice of our auditor, we've increased that to seventy-five. And our use of, we'll be using a one hundred thousand, again, from our E and D to fund net school spending obligations. In chapter, uh, slide seven shows the budget summary. So you can see our chapter seventy-one, chapter seventy budget, fourteen million, two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. We subtract out our school choice assessment of two hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our assessment for the minimum contribution is ten million, six hundred nine five thousand, two hundred and thirty-three. You'll see our E and D OPEB transfer and the E and D for the net school spending gap from previous years for operational budget of twenty-four million, eight hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. Our transportation budget total for next year is one million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Of that, chapter seventy-one is funding one million, two hundred fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four. We subtract out the transportation reimbursement fund of three hundred thousand, leaving one hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and seven, seven dollars to be assessed to our towns. Our debt service, you'll see that our principal is finally higher than our interest, which is good, uh, for a total of one million, five hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred and three dollars. We have no capital, um, our buy-in assessment and our super betterment fee dropped off last year. That was thirty-five thousand. That was the final year of it, so we don't carry that forward. Our FY24 budget for assessment is twenty-eight million, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and one dollars. We add back in the school choice assessment, two hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-six, for a total operating budget and school choice of twenty-eight million, three hundred four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven, or a proposed FY24 budget of twenty-eight million, seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and one. Slide eight shows our budget, begins our budget highlights. We look, we are looking to add a new full-time equivalent veterinary science instructor. Our partnership with the Second Chance Animal Services up the street is going extremely well, and we'll have four years of students in that now. So the additional instructor will facilitate adding four, four years of students in that, as well as the one-off site and onsite at the school. We're looking to adopt the BRIGHT program. BRIGHT is Bridging Resilient Youth Transitions. The BRIGHT program adds three constants, it's staffing, services, and space for our students who are experiencing some social-emotional learning problems on that. Uh, we'll look to add a chronic disabilities teacher, as well as a BCBA, to provide the psychological services in that program. We're looking to add a testing specialist. We call it MCAS here, MCAS being the high-stakes assessment testing. But this individual will also oversee all testing. MCAS, access testing for our L students, as well as the AP testing, as well as the trade testing for their licensure exams on that. They'll be responsible for administering and providing the training to the teachers, as well as looking at the data and diving deep into it to see our areas of strengths and our areas of improvement as well. We're looking to add an instructional coach. Instructional coach, again, is non-administrative, non-evaluative. That coach will go into the classrooms and see the instruction going on, again, identify our areas of strength that we can replicate. That coach will go into the classrooms and see the instruction going on, again, identify our areas of strength that we can replicate in the other classrooms or areas of weakness that we need to provide professional development for. And we're looking to add a guidance counselor for our freshmen. Currently, we have four guidance counselors that are over the two-hundred-and-fifty teacher ratio. A new guidance counselor will be for the freshmen that experience the most transitions coming from their member towns, like when they cohort of students to a new school and then experiencing ongoing transitions every two weeks as they rotate through the different trade programs. And it will offset the load of students on our other guidance counselors, bringing us in line with the guidance counselor student ratio to. We look to continue use of our SOA Student Opportunity Act funds to provide significant professional development to our staff, especially cooperatives focused on social emotional issues of students. And we're looking forward to using our SOA funds to provide programs and speakers that'll be student-facing to address issues such as bullying, bias, mental health, and so on. We're creating a full-time position for our athletic director, currently that's a stipend position for a teacher. We've found that the duties required for our athletic programs require a full-time person. Most of the MIA meetings are during the school day, we're pulling that teacher out of the classroom and putting a sub in there. And we know that with a sub, you get subpar instruction on that, so that'll address a lot of the needs that we have there. We're looking to create a position for an athletic trainer, the MIA requires that you have an athletic trainer at all football games, home and away, so that'll facilitate that new requirement by the MIA. And with the significant addition of IT and devices to all our classes and our students during the pandemic to facilitate remote training, brings on more devices, more failures, more fixes. So we have a need for a new IT network technician to provide support for all the electronics. And currently, human resource duties are split between the superintendent's office and the business manager's office. And again, it's becoming a daunting task to take care of all of that. So a dedicated human resource specialist will ensure that the onboarding of all our teachers or staff will get done in terms of the training, the mentorships, checking all the boxes for code of ethics and so forth, and make sure that they read the policies, procedures handbook, and handbooks, faculty handbooks and so forth. We've provided funding to upgrade our financial and HR software system, which is end of life, so it's no longer new fixes or upgrades to that system. And this will bring us into compliance with more electronic rather than paper resources on that. And we've included wage increases for all our employees as our collective bargaining agreements are up and we're currently negotiating all of those. And we funded the first increase in health insurance premiums since 2018. We've been very fortunate not to have an increase, and we're looking at just over a six percent increase next year. We've provided adequate funding for inflation for our supply and material accounts for each one of our technical programs. With the vocational school, there's cost beyond textbooks, wood, air gas, everything's gone up. If you're involved in the trade, you know that. And we're including money for text for math, science, a couple of our shops, as well as social studies. And our big equipment adds, we'd be in advanced manufacturing to replace the Haas CNC machine and upgrade all our welders, make dig welders in our metal fab shop and get a working cement man for our health tech program on that. We've included money for building facility use study, we're currently at our max and the highest level of students, just over twelve hundred students. Our teachers, academic teachers are sharing classroom space and our shops are at capacity. So rather than make some decisions on our own, what we think will work, we've included money to hire a professional to come in and do a efficiency use study on our building and see where we can add some efficiencies and gather some space. And we're looking to add a new full-time custodian as well. Slide twelve shows the freshman seat allocation, it's based on our district agreement with our ten towns. That sets it on the capital population of each one of our ten towns, you can see the total capital population is 17,769, of which Southbridge has 2,459, equating to thirteen point eight four percent of our ratio. And when multiplied by the three-hundred-and-twenty-five available freshman seats, that allocates forty-five seats for the town of Southbridge. Slide thirteen shows our current foundation enrollment and projected foundation enrollment for FY24. And you can see the total, just over twelve hundred for FY24, one thousand two hundred and thirty-two students as opposed to FY23, which was one thousand two hundred and one, for an increase of thirty-one students. Southbridge has two hundred and eight for FY24, it was two hundred and two for an increase of six students in the foundation. Slide fourteen just breaks it down by Southbridge Public Schools as well as Bay Path. And again, you'll see the increase for each one of those, for a total increase of twelve, six for us. Slide fifteen shows the twenty-four required local contribution, our current year FY23 required contribution for Southbridge. Nine million, five hundred, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine, municipal growth factor of four point six four percent. And the FY24 preliminary required local contribution is $10,017,647. Excess shortfall local effort is $95,734, for a total of $10,113,381. And down below, you can see that broken out, budgeted portion for the town of Southbridge as well as Bay Path. Bay Path is $4,206,346. Slide sixteen is the total FY24 required contribution breakout, you can see the town of Southbridge compared to Bay Path, FY23 to four. And the percent change is located there as well. So for FY24, it's $1,5646, FY23 was $954,000, for a change of $51,153. Slide seventeen shows the school attending children report, we've been providing this since 2013, the town seems to like it. You can see our ten towns there, broken out, Southbridge is highlighted, for a change from 2021 to 2022 of fifty-eight less school attending children. And overall, for since 2013, it's been a decrease of two-hundred-and-sixty-two students. But our ten-town district has seen over the past, since 2013, one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight less school-aged children in their towns. Slide eighteen is the statement of assessments, again, you see our ten towns broken out, Southbridge is highlighted. Total minimum contribution for our ten towns, $10,695,233, Southbridge is $1,5646. You see the foundation enrollment is two hundred and eight, or sixteen point eight percent of our 1,232 total students. We multiply that ratio times the transportation assessment total of $143,707, equates to $24,262. Capital population, the ratio is thirteen point eight four, we multiply that by the debt service of $1,553,503. It equates to $214,985 for a total assessment for Southbridge of $1,244,893. And slide nineteen just breaks that out, FY23 and FY24 for minimum contribution, transportation, debt service. And you can see that overall, there was a decrease of $23,968 from FY23, or a negative one point eight nine percent. I went through a lot really quick. I want to thank you for your continued support and answering the questions.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Mr. Runner, first of all, thank you. Happy to hear about the vet program, it was one of the last things I got to vote with Helen on was establishing that vet program, so I'm really happy to see it thriving. You said you were, you're increasing, based on your auditor's recommendation, the amount you're putting into OPEB from fifty thousand to seventy-five thousand. Do you know roughly what the percentage is for the district covering their liability?
I'm at a loss without our business manager, who couldn't attend tonight, she's late for a wedding. I can get that for you. Seventy, we're still, you know, yeah, we've got a long way to go, so increasing.
If I remember, it was upwards in the tens of millions, so, yeah. I just like to know roughly each year how we're doing overall investing in that, so. Overall, I'm always happy to support a budget that actually requires us to pay less than we did the previous fiscal year, so. Delivering great results for less money, it's always a win, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Marquetti?
Thank you, so the budget is $1,244,893, correct? So I'm looking at our, our budget, and I think there's a problem here, because ours says $1,268,861, which was last year's. So am I reading it wrong, or is that just copied over to this year's budget, is it incorrect?
So what number did you have?
I'm looking at our budget, not yours, it's not your, it's not your mistake or any, I'm not even sure it's a mistake, I'm just asking, is there, why the difference here? Budgeted item that we have is last year's number, the budgeted item that he has is $23,968, that's, and we will be voting on this later.
So, so on, on, on this front page, it's correct, so.
Yeah, no, the front voting document, Mr. Marquetti, is correct, the number is the same.
So it's right, yeah, on the agenda.
I'm looking at unclassified.
Yeah, no, it's under Southbridge Public Schools, total Bay Path, if you see, you'll see that's.
Okay, so then why is it wrong with unclassified, which we will be voting on later?
I understand why, why Bay Path is in unclassified to begin with. It should be in schools. I've already dated that category, it makes no sense.
So if we could just, if we could just, Rob, you know, find out about that, I would appreciate it. So if I'm looking at it wrong, just let me know.
I think the booklets that we are looking at were the first preliminary booklets where we talked about how kind of at that town council meeting, it was more of a living document that was going to end up changing. If anything, Counselor Marquetti, your concern will end up saving us money in here than in here. So that's fantastic, I guess. But are there any other questions?
My other, my other question is, I have talked to some people that are, that think that robotics is something that will be, future jobs will all be in robotics, whether you run a lathe or any kind of machinery, you're going to have to know some robotics, I'm just wondering if Bay Path is going to offer any of that kind of instruction?
So we do not, we don't have a trade specific to robotics and automation technology. However, we do have a robotics team that just came back this week, the other day, from competing in, just outside San Francisco, California. And we were the only high school teams, we had several, two, four teams that go, we're the only high school age students there, well, competitors, I should say. Everyone else was at the collegiate level and the professional level, they were going against those that design and compete in the battle bots on TV. And they competed against Brazil and Japan, and our students came home with four bronze medals and one gold medal. So we're doing it with a combination of electronics, our program, web dev students, as well as our machine tool technology, advanced manufacturing.
Counselor Steve?
Yeah, I have a quick question, in our budget book, you have a list of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three special revenue funds situation. And when I was looking at it, it struck me as odd, because you've got several of these lines here that didn't make sense, because they were treating expenditures as revenues. I don't, I think the numbers just make sense. The ones in American era, they calculate the expenditures as, as receipts, which makes some sense. At least that's the way I'm reading it, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but.
I can get that from our business manager and get back to you.
I mean, I don't know how, if that's necessarily related to our vote, but I just, it just struck me as, it stood out.
All right, is there anybody else? Okay, we'll see, no more discussion, we'll go to the roll call vote, and this time we'll start with Mr. Provost.
Yes.
Counselor Montigny, yes. Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
And Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
All right, five yes, unanimous of all present. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Helen, as always.
Moving right along, we got Agenda Item Number Five, Review Fiscal Year 2024 Health Department Budget in the amount, the amount of $659,145, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented.
Submove.
Ryan? Yeah, no, they're all Page One.
It's number six.
Yeah, I'm in number six. So.
Yes, sir.
You can, you know, present what you're looking to present.
Thank you, and certainly the Health Department is focused on maintaining a level-funded, level-service budget. And I think we've done that, we've accomplished it. My assessment of past budgets, it was prudent to move some funds from certain budget line items into others to better serve the functions of the department. And what I've identified is two moves. Additional funds to be moved, in the sums of $500 each, into gear and uniforms and also office supplies. And those funds will be removed from our budget line items, conference and meetings, and dues and subscriptions.
Okay.
Okay. And, and this really centers in alignment with, with again, my assessment, which entails observing and identifying that there is a lack of supplies in the Health Department. A considerable lack of supplies, field equipment, et cetera. So I identified opportunities to improve these, and these deficiencies in operational practices. And in the gear and uniforms and office supplies are simply needed for everyday operations and procedures from the field to the office. Everything does go quickly, and it needs to be provided to my team. So, but other than that, I would say, again, just to reiterate, we've, we've kept everything level-funded, and we believe in doing so, that will, that will mean continuity of services and efficiency and efficacy within our scope of inspections.
Great, I always think it's kind of strange how Health Department comes to one and inspections goes the other, but it's all one office. But I do remember we had, we met obviously about a couple of concerns, you were able to get your laptops as part of the supplies.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Most appreciated.
And what about that, I know you had mentioned a printer that would become available for lease in July.
Luckily for me, I went to the ARPA meeting last week and identified that as a, as a need. And I believe that, that the committee did approve that and we're waiting for final approval from the council. So it's not one, a particular model that we're going to lease, but we want to buy outright. And that, I believe, justifies the move into our office supplies, because that will also entail the ink for this unit. It is, it is a, a commercial-grade printer that will be in our office and used by both departments, Health and Building. As we, we are, we collectively all work together right there, so, I, I found that to be a need, and I've been able to, to get approval, pre-approval for that. Uh.
Okay, so you were able to get to Counselor Claus, I mean Counselor Adams, before he froze, before he froze the ARPA?
Always given.
Marquetti, uh.
That's fantastic.
That, that was one of our needs.
I'm very happy to hear that.
Yes, yes.
Did you say you wanted to say something, Mr. Counselor Adams?
My only thing is, Dan, I appreciate it, and that, when it comes to, um, I believe it was the office supplies that went up. I don't know if you guys remember this land by lines, but it, it was on the other page, uh, where, when I'm a hundred percent for gear and uniform, I also, though we, we provided that as well for ARPA, right?
Um, that, well, it, it, hopefully you understand that, um, that's contingent upon several factors, and, and I, I think the interest was there. Um, this was constructed before the ARPA, and, and, and in lieu of approval for the ARPA, certainly, uh, the, the amounts here could, could be, uh, moved, or, or eliminated. Um, I, I, with an emphasis that I, I am, I am not overly keen on the previous budget amounts for conference and meetings and dues and subscriptions. I think that was not, um, not a value.
So I just wanted to say that the, it's coming up in front of town council on the twenty-fourth, all these ARPA motions. But obviously, your, your department, it's five hundred dollars normally, I'm assuming you've spent five hundred dollars annually, but it may, may be more cost to it as everything goes up.
That's correct.
You know, and then I guess we can take a look at it, I don't have a problem with it, I'm saying, maybe take a look at it next year, see where you're at at that point.
Okay, fair enough.
But no, I'm all good with the, I'm actually good with the thousand dollars. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, um, and the only other comment I have before I start to take questions is, uh, I believe it's in the inspections budget, but I am happy to see that, uh, the other position is recommended for full-time that we talked about?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
And that, that is, again, contingency, but that is going to be moved forward by Mike Julian, um, the building inspector, from, from side of the building. And so, uh, but certainly, I, I will assist with that, that, that is one of our bigger moves, as, as the inspection department.
Cause that'll help the Health Department too.
Absolutely.
That's why I brought that thing up about how there's some separate subcommittees, but.
Very much.
I just wanted to point out how it will help the Health Department, uh, grow, to be fully staffed like that.
Yes.
Um, okay, so I'm gonna start at the table, uh, Counselor Ryan, you ready?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Shen, through you to the health director, I just have one question, actually, I was quite happy to see your budget is not that bad. Um, but one thing I noticed was under the epitaphs and promos, um, one is, what, what is the main use of that? Is that like the beautify South Bridge events, things like that?
All those events, the promotional items that we do get out for special events, and certainly where we, um, we are asked for the outreach process, and that could be aligned with, uh, communicable disease such as COVID, and getting information out. Um, that's one of the things that we, we would have to refer to that budget line item to, to meet that.
Um, currently, and we're, we're only partly through the, uh, fiscal year, but we've only, we've spent less than fifty percent of that line item, so I just wanna see what's, is there a justification for continuing to keep it level-funded?
Yes, the justification would, it, it would really entail that we don't know what kind of outreach we may need to do and promote. Alright, and so we wanna keep that, uh, again, contingent if, if there is any further outbreaks or trends with COVID, and we have to get the word out, or, or special events, okay?
Do you know roughly what we spent in years past on prior fiscal years?
Years past, um.
Probably not.
No, no, um, but I, I do understand, uh, in one emphasis that, uh, they didn't go up past. But they were, they were all within that parameter of, of, uh, four hundred dollars.
Okay.
Anybody else at the table? Uh, Counsel, uh, Mr. Provost?
How much money do we, um, collect in, um, permit fees, and where does that money go?
For the Health Department?
For the, for the, um, Building Department.
Well, the Building Department, we just, interesting enough, uh, we're discussing that, and I have, um, an amount that was given to me from, from Kayla, the clerk, and Michael, the inspector, and it was, um, close to two hundred sixty thousand dollars.
And where does that money go?
It goes into the general fund.
General fund, yeah, okay, that's good.
And that's a lot of work, and that's a lot of permits.
Yeah, I'm sure of it.
And, um, and that was actually why we, we decided to move forward with a, a full-time clerk in that position. Because we really, and honestly, become inundated with, um, the permit process for the building side. And I mean, we're, 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 we're multi-functioning departments, and we have Health Department personnel assisting with all the Building Department, and vice versa at times, so all that multitasking becomes quite a challenge, to say the least. Um, and there, and there's times where we, we wanna do a proficient job and assist anybody that comes into the office, but predominantly, people coming in with questions from electric, uh, building, plumbing, will need to go through Kayla and certainly Mike.
Yes.
And we can't assist in much further than collection of money and giving the minimal information, you know, uh, what we know, so. Uh, but when they are there, fully, fully staffed, um, we, I, I think we're, we're very effective, efficient.
And a full permit, it's not, we're over.
Yeah, so I know, and, um, that, that was the biggest challenge, come from the building. I think with the Health Department, we're, we're in a very good place. Um, you know, some of the items that I've looked at since being here, and I've identified and want to move forward is, um, is entailing, uh, testing and evaluation, that's the third-party monitoring and water testing related to the landfill. Um, we have a budget line of fifty-four hundred dollars, and essentially that was, um, tests that were done over the years to ensure the validity of the, uh, of the company that does the official test.
Yes.
Alright, and all of them came back within parameters and compliance, and, uh, there was no erroneous information or direction, so I believe there's, there's no need for that, um, currently. Uh, we're keeping that, we do have, um, the specialized services count that, um, that we use for public health emergencies, and we, we've used right now a portion of it for, um, for solid waste management, um, issues and challenges. But it was recently used by Weston and Sampson to review the RFP, collection of information assisting the town, and that came direct, that's gonna come directly out of our budget. Um, and, um, we also, with the specialized services, we count on, on that to pay our, uh, public health nurse, Cheryl Winwinski, for her services, so we keep that, and then obviously, we have the three hundred fifty thousand dollars, which is the purchase of services, which we're, we're basically a holding vessel for, so, we don't touch that, as you all may know, so, um.
Alright, sounds good, um, Counselor Steve's?
Yeah, I have a quick question, with the fact that the landfill contract is ending, are we gonna have seen these two, the eight thousand that are going to you and to Maritza, ending in March, does that account that, count that? Cause I don't think that's, I don't see why, I don't think that's in the current RFP, and I don't see why it would.
I believe, I, I believe that, that will cease. Yes.
Okay.
So is that, so then is that accounted for in the latter, latter part of this conference, do you?
No.
You need to figure that out.
Yes, and that's, that's reimbursement, uh, also along with CDBG, and, um, let's just say I have, I have further discussions, negotiations, et cetera, with, with PEG to discuss these, but certainly, um, that, that is something that we do, we do have to look at and analyze for the future.
Yeah, sure.
There are considerable portions right there. Yes, and, uh, so a lot of moving parts, but I think again, collectively and realistically, we follow with, uh, within, uh, the scope of being level-funded and within all the parameters set forth with, with, with aligning a level service budget, and doing, you know, meeting our goals and meeting the mandate set forth by the state with, with our inspections in all fronts of public health, and this is adequate, I believe.
What's that, Counselor?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mr. Shen.
He answered some of my questions, I'll give you the Casella money for eight thousand for you, eight thousand dollars for food inspector, and then, uh, the landfill monitor, those positions are funded through Casella, so with the clo, landfill closing, we're gonna have to make up at least your, your money.
That's correct.
Shouldn't the landfill wanted to go away, if there's gonna be no more?
Yes.
Landfill.
That's, that, that is what they plan, yes.
And I, I know hate getting rid of bodies, but, but the, the position is going away, and the funding's going away, if they wanna keep the person, it's gonna have to come from the general fund.
Correct.
As a transfer.
Yes.
So, with the landfill contract, not the landfill, I'm sorry, with the trash con, contract coming, they're talking about hiring a couple additional, additional people, am I correct? If, if, no, which one they go to. Shouldn't we consider those people for those positions? If the money's going away, they should go away, okay, but I think that's what was told to us many years ago, and same thing with the CDBG money. When that funded, well, I was opposed to hiring people on grants, because when the grants go away, we mysteriously end up with them, and they become a benefit package for the community. So I look at the, with the budgets the way they are, you're looking at, uh, the landfill monitor, I think, at, uh, somewhere around sixty thousand dollars.
Fifty-three.
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 At fifty-three-ten, I'm sorry, and, so if, if worse comes to worse, we'll remain in that position, save fifty-three thousand dollars.
Yes, that is a challenge, yes, and consequently, this may happen, and not, not, you know, I, I really just wanna underscore the importance of having these individuals here, uh, but, but what, what, going back, what was negotiated, what was done previous to my hire, um.
But with the funding mechanism going away, I mean, that's a, that's fifty-three thousand dollars more that the community or the manager has to find to be able to keep that position, same thing with, with, I think, Hector's position.
Yep.
I believe at one time that position was a truck inspector, when the landfill trucks came into the landfill, and they looked inside the body.
I think you're right, yes.
And the landfill closed, and that position is still being paid for by reimbursements.
What is the actual deal?
I mean, we're losing those reimbursements, so.
Yes, we are.
There's a, now there's twenty-five thousand dollars, twen, almost twenty-six thousand, that is gonna have to be looked at some point in twenty-four to, to pay for it.
You're right.
And that's not, that's not accounted for in the budget right now.
Oh, Mr. Shen, I'm gonna let, uh, Counselor Adams speak to this, you, well, it's, it's up to you. I, I just, I thought he was gonna speak directly to this point.
I think, uh, Mr. Pulowski had his hand up first.
Alright, uh, well, you might get.
Or to answer some of those questions.
That's where, that's where I'm at here, it's more to answer the questions.
George is right, in, in a sense, that this landfill, landfill reimbursement, that was what we were sold, and that's what we were talking about this entire time. But we just set aside three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, Arpa, and I don't wanna ever use one-time funds to pay for a position, but if it becomes, we're waiting on the, uh, the motion, so we can, we can vote on what we'd like to see. If, if it goes that flat fee, obviously I'd ask that question, is that already in the, the funds, for, for enterprise funds? And did that, the answer was yes, so if we're looking at, you know, how, keeping two on, that's obviously gonna go into the contract itself that we have to pay. If, you know, we can take a look at that, the, the three eighty is something that we could possibly use for the time being to cover that cost. Now, when it came to CDBG funds, there is a requirement to spend funds on certain administrative side of the house, is required, uh, by, by the, uh, to, to hire, it's required by the state, that, that you have to hire certain positions, or certain individuals, or certain whatever, there's a portion, that is a percentage, that has to come out of that CDBG fund.
Right, and I, and I understand that, but when this was brought before the town, and council voted on it, I was clearly understood that when that money went away, those positions went away.
Yes.
Because it, it was the fact that it was grant positions, they were reimbursed positions from Casella. We expected Casella to be here for three more additional years on top, like the twenty-seven, but it didn't happen. Your ARPA funds are not guaranteed.
But the CDBG funds, the, the CDBG funds, I'm, uh, on that one, they're still there.
Yeah.
We've improved and all that kinda stuff, but we understand that, so, CDBG's still there for, for you, and I'm sure, um, Mr. Dean can work some numbers out and try to help out where she can. You're right, the ARPA funds aren't there, but if it's a one-time fee to cover the rest of the fiscal year, um, for those individuals, while the enterprise one gets online, that's how we vote, then, then we should be okay. There's gonna be some restructuring, though, that's gonna have to happen, cause that education portion, those two individuals are educators of the public.
And I, I understand, I think in your long term, you, but, but again, when you're looking at a million-eight shortfall in the budget, you have to find some way of possible cuts, and I look at, I, I, again, I look at those positions that are gonna be funded, you know, come next year, you're looking at seventy thousand plus dollars that you have to find, with no guarantee that ARPA's gonna do that. Santa Claus isn't gonna always be there.
Santa's gone.
Right, right.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It, it, this will be something we'll have to deal with next year as council, uh, clear.
Well, I, I think you don't have to deal with that, wait, the budget.
Right, there's, there's, there's three extra months, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
You guys are gonna make this determination, to recommendation to council, who's gonna vote on this budget next week, or in two weeks.
Right.
So you're either gonna vote yes, with the hopes of getting ARPA.
Right.
Or you're gonna vote no, because there's no guarantee of the funds, and then you're gonna at least give you the ambition for the, to, to move and get these positions funded.
Right.
You know?
Well thankfully, it's only gonna be for three months, so the, the number we're looking for to make up the difference in twenty-twenty-four will be short money. Um, so it'll be a decision that, it'll be a nice discussion at council in two weeks, I, I think, and I appreciate you bringing up that point.
But I just, I, I just, I guess I'm finding it hard time if you're gonna move this thing forward okay, and, and not knowing what's gonna happen with them, I wish Charlie would, would let us know, you know what, if you got the eight thousand dollars January first, they're good for a year, if you got Casella money, so they're good. We get that money July first, instead of waiting until January, or whatever, they're, they're safe, you got a whole year to work on. But then you'll have to worry about it twenty-five.
Right, it, it'll be a good, uh, discussion at full council after there's a recommendation tonight. So thank you for, for bringing up that point, I'm sure we'll, we'll get to that again, um, we're gonna go with Mr. Pulowski.
I, I have a lot of memory in Perryville, I had filled, and we had the landfill agreement initially. About a year or so later, we had an acting town manager who put together some improvements, uh, they called it the extension agreement. And years later, when the town gave, uh, relieved Casella of a few years of our free trash pickup, there are other changes, and they weren't all broadcasted at the meeting, I never got to see what that agreement was, but I remember very vividly that even when it was time to get, to no longer need a landfill monitor, that there would need to be, and maybe state laws have changed, a continued oversight of the landfill, cause miners leak. We got double lines, but they sometimes leak, they always leak, and it gets worse with time. And we were assured that Casella, as I remember it, was from their CEO, who was here assuring our council, they needed to vote for this, that they would take care of those responsibilities in perpetuity. And it may be helpful that one of you that are in, most interested in saving the townspeople. And it may be helpful that one of you that are most interested in saving the townspeople some money, the taxpayers some money, there might be something in those agreements that over the decade or more that has passed, that maybe something has been forgotten about. And that perhaps we could have a professional company selected to come in and Casella pay the bill. Because that's what was promised. Promises are often broken. And I don't know if that council in relatively recent years threw that away and decided to let the town take that responsibility. But that adds up and it's important to protect. Although that aquifer underneath isn't contributing to our town's water supply, it does contribute to the water supply of some single-family homes that tap into the ground. And it's good to know what's under us. There's rivers of water below us and we have eight billion pounds of running garbage down there that might break right through and cause us havoc.
Thank you, Mr. Pulaski. I have Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chenier. Just a couple things. First of all, I would suggest we take that third-party monitoring, water testing out. He has said it's not necessary, so I think that would be a good place to start cutting on this.
Okay.
Five thousand four hundred, I think. You admitted that you don't need it. So I would like to see that taken out. As far as the other positions, Anna Smith and Hector Ravello, although I agree that that is supposed to go away. Mr. Shenier, I do agree with you. I do think Anna Smith is going to be needed when we start the new trash program. Now, we could say, well, we could hire somebody else, but Anna Smith has been there for us. I have changed my mind about Anna Smith, I know last year.
Yeah.
I was one there while we were gone.
Good.
But I do admit, she has been doing a good job. So we are gonna need Anna Smith, I think, when we start the new program.
And I understand that, I truly understand that. What I don't understand is how are you gonna keep somebody? You're not voting for the person, you're voting for the position.
Yes, noted.
And so if we start an enterprise fund, I believe her salary's gonna have to come out of the enterprise fund, I believe. What we have been told all along in all of our meetings is that whoever touches that program will be paid from the enterprise fund, whether it be billing or oversight from the enterprise fund.
As long as it being.
One of the taxpayers.
Well.
So wait a minute, I'm not done. Now, the other thing is, I'm not understanding this reimbursement on commercial drive because I see several different numbers. In the beginning of the budget book, three thirty-seven, one forty for commercial drive, sixteen thousand in salaries equals three sixty-six. So in the beginning of the budget book, Charlie's summary, he does have three sixty-six, but there's like three, three different numbers going on.
Yeah.
So which is it?
Well, what I found out with the use of UNIS, there was some errors, considerable errors in the calculations. So I don't know what version, but that was identified just a few weeks ago with accountant Christine and town manager's office. And the information that I received as well, different versions did not make sense and they collectively weren't the same. So I think that's what it's, the problem is with the system of UNIS. Okay?
And then the other thing is if we are being reimbursed, then shouldn't that be negative number? I mean, over here, you've got some of their salaries reimbursed by CBBG, so there's a negative thirty-six thousand. So if the, if the road is being reimbursed, shouldn't that come out of the budget? I don't know, I just.
It's a very good point.
I know, it doesn't probably.
I can look into that, more or less. Again, the, the way this has been structured again before my time where these amounts were coming for, is, is still new to me. And I'm working on the clarification, understanding of those. I would just have to reiterate and emphasize, we do need the personnel, certainly with Anna and Hector with the solid ways. We really do.
I understand.
And that's, and I totally agree, where is that going to be coming from to pay these individuals? That's, that's, I agree.
Specialized services, forty thousand, what exactly does tie-in bond mean?
Well, the tie-in bond, this is, this is the monitoring of the wells and the water testing related to the landfill.
But you have them up above in specialized services, tie-in bond?
And tie-in bond, yes, and there's also contracted services that were initiated and done with Anna to pay for some of those, those tests and services is all associated with the landfill. It comes out of both.
Well, then wouldn't you be able to eliminate some of that forty thousand, not all of it, but some of it? If you're not going to, if the committee decides to remove the third-party monitoring, won't you be able to cut that specialized services back a little bit since tie-in bond?
Yes and no, and that's because of the fact that it, we use that for specific reasons. And from year to year, we don't know. And an example is the amount that's going to be used to pay Weston and Sampson. Okay? And that was fifteen thousand dollars, give or take. And when I came on board, previous town manager, Michael McCall, came to me and asked if we could use that amount from that line item to pay for this.
But I'm just seeing the name tie-in bond here, I just wonder, what do they have to do in specialized services? Okay, that's all I want, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Counselor Adams.
Just real quick, just a reminder to the subcommittee, you can recommend the change.
Right.
Right, or you can vote, no, it could be a zero or five vote, it's still gonna go up. Only the town council with the five vote can change the budget of the town manager.
That's true, that's right.
So just a reminder, you can't change the number that's on here, but you can sit there and when it comes to budget, this is one of those things you say, hold, hold. You know, if there's specific in there, and then the explanations need to be added and discussion needs to be had, that's right.
So are you saying, Counselor Adams, that we don't, let's say we're gonna get rid of that fifty-four hundred, we don't amend this? Either, you don't amend this agenda item?
You don't amend this, I see committees do it all the time.
You're not allowed to amend it, you can't.
I see plenty of committees do it.
I'm just telling you, owned by the charter, you can't amend that, you can vote down on it, but it has to go to the town council to make that decision, not the subcommittee. Again, you're a recommending board, that's all you are. You're not a decision.
So what they can do though is they can, they can vote and they can recommend making those changes.
Absolutely.
That's what they can do.
I saw E and D make an amendment on the use of master's grant from the AO to the sidewalks and the streets.
It's different with budget.
It's not the budget.
Yeah, this is different with the budget. The town manager presents the budget and the whole council has to vote to change it, that's why we don't have a whole council compliment here.
Just to add in there, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. It takes a six vote to increase the budget. Okay, so that at the town council.
So if we were to get rid of, or not want to recommend the fifty-four hundred, would we amend it to say recommending, we recommend the budget, but we would like to make these changes?
When the budget comes up and we're vote on the budget, this is where you, as the chair, would say, hey, this was a, we want to put a hold on this for, and then it'll be reaggressed by the chair. Because there may be a couple things that we say, put a hold on. So when it comes to that.
So I appreciate, so I appreciate the lesson here, so if.
I've told you that before.
If we want to, if we want to do this, remove the fifty-four hundred, we should vote no to recommend?
If you don't agree with budget, you've said not recommend it at this time, doesn't mean the whole thing's not recommended, so. But at the meeting, you will sit there and say, hey, put a hold, fifty-four hundred dollars. We didn't agree with adding or keeping this in there, and this is the reasons.
This is why we voted no.
And then Dan can come up there and say, this is the reason I need it, you know, or not, or I agree with it.
Okay, Counselor Ryan?
Yeah, so the budget that's gonna go in front of the town council is the manager's budget, regardless of what this subcommittee says. So if this subcommittee makes the decision to say, we recommend this budget absent the testing, that would be the recommendation you would present to the entire council and say, that's our recommendation. Now, what we're considering at the full council is the manager's proposal. We would have to vote on the floor to amend that, to reflect that. But here, you can make that recommendation and say, as the subcommittee recommends to move forward with this, absent the fifty-four hundred for that, and then the council would have to take it up at the full council level to amend the budget officially.
When did that change? On council, we used to go line item by line item, and when it came to a certain line item, they scratched it out. I'll use an example. No, this was during, on PPP, we had a, the chief was had, the fire chief had fifteen hundred dollars in there for a stipend. And the PPP, subcommittee meeting, we lined item that out, took that fifteen hundred dollars right out, and it never went up to council.
But it went up to council with the original amount and then the council amended it on the floor to take that out.
Back then, it didn't go up there at all.
Every year I've been in council, they've done that.
We scratched it out. So, where does it say that in China?
It says right here, it's been fixed one. Honor before, I mean, we're just. All right. In amending the budget, it may by majority vote of the full council, i.e. a minimum of five votes, delete or decrease any program or amount except of the full council, I'm sorry, I didn't read that twice, except expenditures required by law or debt services. It may by two-thirds vote of full council, i.e. six, increase any amount. Town council is a subcommittee.
Right. So that would be my recommendation, I'll just make a recommendation.
Upon the day you vote on. There's nothing wrong with that.
You can just make a motion and set up your, you can make a motion for the various recommendations you want. And you say that you recommend not doing, say for example, what Mike is saying. And if you vote on that as a recommendation, that will go up as the recommendation to the budget. You have this budget, but we recommend doing this to it instead.
So we can motion to amend or recommend that something be removed and then we approve the entire main motion?
Yeah, say move to recommend the budget absent X, Y, and Z, if we have multiple things, and then move it up.
Procedurally, I think that's right or not.
Yeah.
You are sending a recommendation, as long as you're clear what your recommendation is.
Yeah, because it's still the recommendation of the subcommittee.
It would be your responsibility to change that amendment in there, if that's the case, if this you want to do. There's not clarification on it, usually what we do is once we get up to the town council for the budget here, or the budget, we're done, the chair will go down that laundry list and say, hold, hold.
Oh, yeah, we do that too.
You have to say, Mr. Chair, hold.
I just find it strange to vote no on a six-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-dollar budget when we only disagree on five thousand.
We're just making a.
Well, that's why we're providing a recommendation.
Yeah, bring it up there, but at the meeting, at the town council meeting, you can sit there and say, hold.
No, what we're doing is, like, you can, Counselor Ryan says, we're recommending this budget with an amendment to take that.
That's this committee's recommendation.
Just remember, that number that's on that front sheet is gonna go up to the town council.
Yes, because that's the way it's supposed to work.
We got it.
Okay, so.
So.
We're good, we're good.
In all, I support Counselor Marquetti's decision to put the fifty-four hundred.
So is that a motion to make a recommendation?
A motion that we.
And I'll second it.
You recommend this budget amended to take out the fifty-four hundred, is that sound?
For the testing and evaluation, yeah.
Wow.
Amendment to, with recommendation, I'm gonna put at the end, as council has presented, with a recommendation to remove.
Testing and evaluation.
Testing, evaluation.
You can put the line on the number.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, just put testing and evaluation fifty-four hundred.
Gotcha.
I don't know why we bother reading the zero, zero, blah, blah, blah.
So we have. All right, so we have Marquetti motion and Ryan second.
To accept this with that amendment.
We're gonna add that.
With Adams approval.
Not accept.
We're gonna add that, like, let's take a roll call, I mean, show hands vote on this amendment to add that language to the end, okay? So no discussion on the amendment itself, we just had it, I would think. Okay, so by show of hands, yes. All those, no, okay, so unanimous of all present for the amendment. So now it does read, review fiscal year 2024 health department budget in the amount of six fifty-nine, one forty-five, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented with a recommendation to remove testing and evaluation fifty-four hundred dollars. Okay.
All right, I can go ahead and give them their wages and that kind of stuff?
Not here, I don't think.
Well, we should.
Doesn't sound like it's the flavor of this subcommittee to change that here. It's a recommendation, the council's gonna have to as a whole do it. I will certainly bring up in my report your concerns and we will discuss it at town council, but right now, it's, maybe we will hold it, but I think that, I don't think that this committee has shown interest in amending that portion of it.
I have to that particular element, if my calculations are correct, we would need to find some sort of, some money, amount to about twenty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Okay.
For those last few months, for those four.
It's fantastic. You have one more?
You gonna add that to your motion?
Absolutely not.
Just asking the question.
Unless there's. All right, very good. So now we're gonna vote, roll call, on the agenda item as amended. So rotating, so start with Counselor Montigny, yes. Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
And Mr. Provo.
Yes.
Okay, five oh, as amended, unanimous of all present. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the discussion and I thank you for your support, have a good evening.
Have a great night.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
So moving right along to agenda item number six, review fiscal year 2024 veterans budget in the amount of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars, and entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented. All right, Mr. Roberts, how are you?
Very good, good evening, everybody.
All right, sorry for making you wait so long.
That's okay, my pleasure. All right, this should be pretty easy. Level funded budget, pretty much. Salaries pretty much only show a two percent increase. So go by the numbers, seventy-three thousand, four hundred twenty-five thousand for the position, fifteen hundred and eight for the grave registration officer, and that only includes a two percent COA. Office supply stays at two hundred. Mileage for conferences and meetings, one hundred and fifty, stays the same. I'm gonna skip to the last one, which is dues and subscriptions, that also stays at two hundred. Prior to that, there is an increase that I'm requesting, and it's from three hundred to four fifty for conference and meetings. And last year, I'm making that request because we only did one conference and meeting because the second one was canceled due to COVID. And on that, that one was a total of four hundred and seventeen dollars. So I had out-of-pocket costs just for the one conference. So there is two conferences a year put on by Department of Veteran Services, and we didn't even do two. In the first couple of years, we didn't do any because of COVID and everything. So this year, we already have them booked for June, and there's a winter conference in November. And they're already laid on, so I'll assume they're gonna go. And just like to get that funded so I don't have to pay out-of-pocket again.
Fantastic. Any discussion, I see Counselor Steve's.
I was looking at the grave registration officer, that's a stipend, isn't it?
Ah, yes, but it's listed here as part of, you know, salary and wages. It's always been since I've been here, I don't, I don't.
But, yeah, I know it is, it's just weird, it just seems like it would be weird because it's essentially a stipend, and why would we give a COA to a second?
But if you add the two salaries together, because I thought the same thing, still comes out to two percent?
I mean, would, yes, it seems odd.
Well, you know, your recommendation earlier is to eliminate all COAs. But the thing is, when we get to general government, is that your intention to eliminate all COAs?
Well, I'm thinking that it's something we, I think we might want to look at to see what the cost, what the benefits would be. I don't want to get rid of people. I want to see that we can, but what I think, that given the cost that we're looking at going down in the very near future, we're gonna need to do something to rein this in the system. And if we want, that may be the easiest way to do it with the least amount of money. Because they'll still have, their jobs are still there. They're still making, I mean, if you look at the salaries, the salaries are pretty. And, and you know, and I understand that it's always nice to get a little extra cost of living and the money certainly may be helpful when it comes to inflation, stuff like that. But the COAs, as they are, don't matter to inflation now. And the funding that the people are getting. Um, and the, the funding that the people are getting, quite honestly, is for those, those of us who are making a lot less than town employees are now making. Um, are living on a lot less. So, you know.
Well, I don't wanna get.
The town employees are getting pretty much.
I don't wanna get too off topic because here you're discussing a matter of thirty dollars, but I, I personally find it hard to. Agree with that in a year of such high inflation after the pandemic, but I, I, I respect, uh, your comments there. But when it comes to the veterans budget.
Do you remember that, that, if, those increases are coming from people who are already, are not, are seeing the same issues. That the staff, the staff are seeing. But it's coming out of their pockets.
Okay. So is there any other discussion on the veterans budget? The veterans budget? No? Okay, we're gonna go with roll call, starting with Counselor Marquetti.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Provost?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny, yes. Unanimous of all present? Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
You gonna make the request? Um, I'm also agenda, uh, you know, the last one, but I'm right here. It's just two things. It follows on the veterans department, on the uncharacterized.
We're office mates. He's good.
A move to suspend the rules and move agenda item number eight up to three four seven.
Is there a second?
Why is it that it's in your budget?
Okay.
It doesn't make any sense.
I don't, I do it, I ask this every year.
Um.
I asked that over here.
We'll do a quick roll call to suspend the rules to do that. Um. It's, aren't you supposed to do a roll call to suspend the rules?
You don't have to.
Well, we're gonna do a roll call. Mr. Ortiz?
What am I doing?
We're, the motion to suspend the rules to move eight before seven because he's sitting at the table. Yes.
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 Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Got, Mr. Provost, yes. Counselor Montigny, yes. And Counselor Marquetti, yes. Okay, so we're gonna go with eight first.
Okay, two items in the uncharacterized.
Well, I'm sorry, let me just read it first. Review fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-four unclassified budget in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred dollars. And entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented.
Some moved.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So veterans memorials, ceremonies, thirty-two hundred dollars. That stays the same. Basically, that's what we use. We, uh, issue that to the, uh, Veterans Council of Southbridge and they take care of all the monuments. Uh, buying new flags, solar lights, and any kind of repairs and maintenance that needs to be done throughout the year. Um, I personally do the audit every year with the accounting office. And for the last three years since I've been here, we're always over that amount. Um, and we succumb other monies from donations or whatnot through the council. So, uh. And that was approved from a couple of years ago from twenty-seven to thirty-two hundred. Keeping to that thirty-two hundred, which should maintain that level of funded budget for that item. The, uh, other line item is veterans benefits themselves. That's through chapter one fifteen. Where as long as I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, the town gets seventy-five percent of that back. Not asking for any increase there, so that stays at a hundred thirty-five thousand.
It's pretty simple.
Yep, sounds simple. Does anybody have any discussion?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll do a roll call here. Uh, Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Provost?
Yes.
Before you finish, I just don't understand then why Bay Path is in here, because if you look at the final line here, it's one point four million.
We'll have to send the manager an email. Uh, Counselor Montigny, yes. Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're voting on a budget here of one point four million.
Always a pleasure.
All right, and finally. Agenda item number seven, review fiscal year twenty twenty-four recreation budget in the amount of seventy-five thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. And entertain a motion to vote to submit to council as presented.
Some moved.
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Brunel, how's it going?
Uh, kinda tired, but.
Yeah.
I'm all right.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So what do you have for us today?
Uh, I have a difference between the last budget of four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. So I'll just go over, um, essentially the budget stays the exact same. The only changes that you see are in salary and wages.
Yep.
Which is my salary going up. Uh, it's a Schedule Five, Grade Thirty-Four, Step Three.
Very good.
Um, I have five summer assistance that I hire. Uh, they will get fifteen dollars as per the minimum wage now. So that was a slight increase and the supervisor of that program gets a two percent increase each year. The only other change that's there is Solitude Waste Man, uh, Solitude Lake Management. So normally they are my specialized services.
Mm-hmm.
And they used to be a company that was more based in Southbridge. Then that was bought by Solitude. They were absorbed and kept a pretty fair rate for us. But in the last, uh, couple of months, they reached out and let us know that they're not gonna keep that, uh, friendly neighborhood price anymore. And they're gonna be increasing it. So normally eight hundred would cover the contractual agreement with them annually. But they're jumping it up to two thousand and fifty dollars.
Understood.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any discussion?
No.
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
So in the salary line item here, it's all lumped into one salary. So. Your salary, the summer director and the summer staff are all one. When you look, when you go across. Why is that? Why don't they have their own line item salary?
I can speak to the town manager and see if we can get that amended for you.
I think it's because all the other staff are per diem staff and not long-term. So there, there's not people who are already in this position. So they all just get grouped underneath because they're specialized per diem positions, right?
I would believe so.
That's normally how it's done, because we don't have the people on staff to list them out.
Another email we'll have to send to the manager.
So specialized services, I don't really understand what you were talking about there.
Yes.
I just know that a lot of the other departments, they have a lot more information underneath things like specialized services, program services. Office supplies, miscellaneous material. They have information included in there to tell us exactly what that's about. So let's just start with specialized services. What is this company?
Well, he just.
Specialized services.
He explained the name of a company, but I have no idea what that's about.
So they maintain the reservoir, reservoir one.
Oh, I see.
They do, uh, permitting, pre-treatment survey, uh, herbicide and algae treatment, and post-treatment inspection.
And that comes out of your budget?
Yes.
Wow.
It is a recreation space that I maintain, so.
All right. So maybe added information in here would be helpful.
Can do.
Our program services?
Program services is for my summer program. Uh, various purchases for that, uh, hiring people to do entertainment. Renting the YMCA maintained pool, Andrew Petro.
Okay.
Yeah.
And office supplies, just like copy paper and things like that?
Yep.
All right. Miscellaneous materials and supplies?
Miscellaneous materials, that would be anything else that I would be purchasing for the recreation department or. Supplies that would go for year-round programming. So anything that I would be needing for my summer or my, or my spring or my fall calendar. Any of those programs, any of those, uh, types of costs that arise.
Can you give me an example of what?
Uh, I hire people for yoga, uh, so supplies for that. Um, I am working with pickleball. So they're gonna be doing one-on-one courses along with, uh, probably my fall programming coming along. And with that, they're gonna be buying materials, uh, gonna be trying to play outside, gonna need netting for that. That's, yeah.
All right.
So essentially just supporting the existing depart, uh, leagues and recreation, yeah, groups.
All right, I got you. Thank you.
Absolutely. But I can definitely add that in. I do, I don't wanna claim ignorance, but this is the first time that I've been in charge of my own budget. This, we're going on nine months of full-time at the moment.
All right.
Great job.
Counselor Steves?
I have a question regarding the salt management. Have you, because of the hike in prices, have you looked at, and is this low enough that you don't have to go to bid? Um, have you looked at, like, re-comparative courses to see if there's anything on there?
I could definitely do that, yeah. Absolutely. Um, it was just more of something that came in the last, uh, probably within like a month of the, uh. Of the budget started to come together. Yeah, so something that I needed to add.
Why that happens, sure.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Because I don't, I don't know if there are any other, I mean, I'm sure there are other companies that do this kind of service and if you can find somebody that's not. Is it gonna be?
I'm all for being competitive with costs.
Okay.
Seems pretty sleazy, right?
One of the jump, that jump like that.
Thank you, Counselor Steves. I do appreciate your, your, uh, desire to, uh, lower the budget as we all, we all want to. Um. All right, so seeing no more discussion, we're gonna do a roll call vote, uh, starting with Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Provost?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny, yes. Counselor Marquetti? Agenda item number nine. Oh, that was unanimous of all present. And move to adjourn. We got Ryan and Provost again. Show hands? Okay, the meeting is adjourned at nine oh six. Wow.